I'm gonna call this meeting to order and hopefully that'll get the sound cut on. We had a great early hour with the Mayor's report for education and so we're a little late starting. I know there's a lot of people here for the public hearing portion of the agenda, which is the rezoning of the Johnquah Plaza property. If you have not signed in, you don't have to until we do the public hearing portion of the agenda. So, Mr. Bakker, I'm sure won't say something at the end, give that to him. So, when we get to that portion of the agenda, we will allow anybody that wants to speak, opportunity to speak at that time. I'll call this meeting to order on Monday, December 2nd, 2013. Want to welcome everyone. Reverend Raymond G. Kaufman of the Log Cabin Community Church at 2699 Log Cabin Drive is here and he's gonna give us our invocation and also lead us in the pledge of the flag. So, would everyone please rise?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
says Lob, but it's Log Cabin.
Yes, sir.
Down on Atlanta Road, close to Blackstones?
Yes, sir.
Yep, great church. Agenda changes, we do not have any. Under the Mayor's report, we are going to recognize the Campbell High School Educational Foundation. I know there's a number of folks, Glenn Jardine, Glenn, you want to come up and introduce who's here?
Yep, is your IT man here? Let's see.
Don't ask me about an IT.
Come on.
While Glenn's doing that, earlier we recognized about thirty students, volunteers, and administrators of all our schools in this area and it's really, makes you feel so good. We do this twice a year and our community starts with our schools. So, there's the IT guy.
Yeah, we're trying to get it on the big screen here. Well, in the interest of time, let's go ahead and get started. I emailed a presentation to you earlier today.
Yeah.
Again, my name is Glenn Jardine. I'm a board member of the Campbell Education Foundation. I also have with me Dr. Denise McGee, the Principal of Campbell. I'm gonna ask her to come up. I'm a Smyrna native and a graduate of Campbell, is my wife and both of my children. We're very happy to be here and I wanted to give you guys a brief overview on the Campbell Education Foundation, the good work that we've done and a lot of that is because of your support. And actually, I wanted to start off with a very big thank you because your support has mattered. There we go. Your support's mattered. It benefits the entire community. As you know, Campbell High School is the only public high school in the city limits of Smyrna and your support has really helped to provide a rich experience and environment for our students. Next slide.
Maybe you have to clap your hands or...
I tell ya. Usually, this happens when we're doing a presentation for a huge project, Corky. You know how that works.
This reminds me of the audiovisual class that I was in.
There we go. The Campbell High School Education Foundation, which one?
Four.
Okay. We're a nonprofit, tax deductible, 501(c)(3). We're exclusively utilized to enhance the educational program. We do not buy football pads, band equipment, paint bleachers or anything like that. It is for the educational and the environment for the kids. We were the second education foundation formed in Cobb County. McKeachran was first because they had a very large family endowment, but we were hot on their heels and we're focused on building our endowment for the high school. And as far as the relationship and the support between the City of Smyrna and the Campbell Education Foundation, we go back to 1996 together. The Education Foundation actually started what was called the Fun Run in 1996 and it's now become the Johnquah Jog. We all know how successful that is. It's really grown beyond what it started with in 95. We're very happy of that and we're one of the beneficiaries of that. And the city helps us with reduced green fees at Fox Creek for our annual golf tournament. So, again, we wanted to thank you for what you do for us. Our annual income for the Education Foundation, it comes from the annual golf tournament in April at Fox Creek. Again, the city helps us with reduced green fees. We appreciate that and I appreciate Max's personal help every year. He gets a lot of golfers, helps us with sponsorships. Our biggest fundraiser is the Johnquah Jog. Campbell provides our ROTC, the students and many of the board members are volunteers. And again, that's very successful and it's really grown beyond what it started. We have an adopt a brick program at Campbell and we're also, also looking for gifts, donations and sponsorships all the time. The funds that we're currently taking in are used for many grants for teaching supplements such as software, additional training and supplies. Again, anything related to the educational mission. We fund the Career Placement Resource Center and this is where the kids go to get help on their research for what colleges they should apply to and help actually with some of the applications in the tech schools and if they're interested in the military, we fund that to help these kids go on and advance their career. We also do after-school tutoring and some other exam kits and such as that. And the results, the Education Foundation would not be so arrogant as to take credit for this, but I'm gonna ask Dr. McGee to explain a few of the good things that are happening at Campbell and we, as an education foundation, are very, very pleased with the path and the trajectory the high school is on. Dr. McGee?
Thank you. Before I begin, I would like to give our sincere thanks to the Mayor and City Council for all of your continuous support. We cannot be the school that we are in the community without your support, so we are most grateful for that. I would also like to recognize a very important person who's extremely helpful with all that we do and that's Jennifer Bennett. Would like to thank her for everything that she continuously does to help support the school, so our sincere thanks. Campbell is a culturally rich and diverse school of over twenty-three hundred students and over the years, we've seen an increase of seventeen percent of our graduation rate. We have a senior class last year that received over three million dollars in scholarship funds from various universities and colleges and over five hundred of our students took over fourteen hundred AP and IB exams and were very successful. Campbell High School actually has the second highest rate of students obtaining an IB diploma in the state of Georgia. Additional success stories, last school year, we were named the 2013 Georgia AP Honor School. We were also listed as one of the America's Best High Schools. We qualified as one of three Cobb County High Schools, only three Cobb County High Schools who received state funding to continue an AP STEM program at the high school level. And we were also recognized as one of America's most academically challenging schools. And even though that may appear to be a negative connotation, it's very positive because that criteria that we established, that rating, is based on our graduation rate, the number of kids who enter colleges and universities and the passing rate of students at our school. So, that's a very positive even though it says academically challenging school.
Okay. Last slide. Thank you so much. Again, we really appreciate your continued support and we're counting on it. It's time well spent and a great school requires not only excellent and committed administrators and teachers, but also an involved and enthusiastic community. We want our students to be proud of their CHS education and their communities. These are the leaders for tomorrow. So, thank you again for your support. We really appreciate it and it is making a difference. Thank you very much.
And Glenn, you got some board members here?
We do. We have Susan Pearson.
You can stand up. This is not hostile yet, it's still good.
Jim Dolmer, Ann Kirk, that everybody knows, and Kathy Riggins. These are all really good volunteers that put their heart and soul in it and it's making a difference.
Yep, and we help, I'm not gonna say fund, but we partner, I think, with the foundation by doing so many things which is so good for us.
Yes, you really help us a lot with sponsorships.
Thank y'all so much.
Well, thank you for what you do for the community too.
I'm gonna ask, give him a big hand.
Thank you.
Kirk, while I got Ann Kirk here, I wanna ask you something.
I couldn't hear you.
I wanna ask Ann Kirk something while she's here. I know she's, Department heads are not at this meeting. And just real quick, cause we got other business, but our recycling items, I heard at a meeting that someone had said or posted something that we took all of our recycling and put it in a landfill somewhere.
No, we do not do that. I'm very proud because all of our recyclables are taken to a company that sorts and recycles them. In fact, the reason I'm sure of this is because the city is getting revenue for those recyclables. It costs thirty dollars a ton to dispose of anything in the state of, in this area of the state of Georgia. Maybe it'd be cheaper in some areas, but in the Atlanta area, that's about the cheapest rate you can get and no one is going to pay thirty dollars a ton and then turn around and pay us thirty dollars a ton for our recycling materials. This is true both for the recycling center and for the curbside program. So, I'm very confident of that. I've visited the plants where the material is taken and I feel very comfortable that that's happening.
I wanna say there was two articles in today's MDJ. One of them talked about our biodiesel. So, if you got any grease that you used or don't wanna...
Please bring us your cooking oil and you can bring it to either the recycling center or any one of the forest fire stations or the Public Works Department. You can bring it in, as long as it's in a, as it's in a plastic jug that does not leak with a top on it. We'll take it.
We're asking a lot though, it's all jugs. But it is great. I mean, we are using that, the more we get, the more we turn into...
And we'll give you a free jug to take back with you to recycle more of.
Well, life don't get any better than that, does it?
No. Thank you very much.
Does the council have any questions about the group? They come up about once every year or so and give us an update, so thank y'all so much for all y'all do. Item four is land issues, zoning and annexation. Item A is Z-13-014, public hearing, zoning request, Z-13-014 zoning amendment, request to modify the currently approved site plan and building elevations for the Johnquah Village Redevelopment Project, eleven point oh-three acre tract, land lots 559 and 594, northeast quadrant of the intersection of Atlanta Road and Spring Road, Branch Capital Partners LP. Is the applicant here? I know he's out there somewhere. I just wanna make sure that, once we get the background, everybody that wants to speak will get an opportunity to speak and make your comments. I would just ask this. After a little while, if it's the same theme, we, you know, we get it, so. So, I mean, you know, I'm just not saying, I'm gonna give everybody the chance to speak and, once we get to that portion of the agenda, then everybody will have the opportunity. So, Mr. Taylor, the background, please.
Mr. Mayor, Branch Capital Partners is seeking approval of a zoning amendment to modify the currently approved site plan and building elevations for the Johnquah Village Redevelopment Project. The subject property was rezoned from general commercial and light industrial to mixed-use conditional for the Johnquah Village Project on November the 5th, 2007 by a vote of seven to zero. The rezoning provided approval for the development of what, one hundred eighty-eight thousand square feet of commercial retail space, twenty-nine thousand square feet of office space and three hundred condominium luxury apartment units. After that rezoning, progress on the project stalled as a result of the economic downturn, the lack of financing. Since work has stopped on the site, the property has gone through foreclosure and community development has worked diligently with property owner to stabilize with regards to soil and erosion control as well as with fencing. The current zoning proposal was heard by the Planning and Zoning Board at the November 11th, 2013 meeting and was recommended for a denial by a vote of seven to zero. Community development recommends approving the requested zoning amendment to modify the currently approved site plan and building elevations with stipulations.
Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that's in opposition to or that would like to make any public comment concerning this issue? And I'm gonna ask that anyone that wants to make any public comment, either for or against, that you come forward at this time and be sworn in. Or Scott, are you gonna just swear everybody in here? And I'd really like to just get everybody out. I just wanted to have one series of swearing in, so even if you end up not wanting to speak, then you don't have to, but I wanna just do one swearing in. Y'all look like pretty honest people, Scott, that we... This is all part of the legal deal, so if you want to speak or think you want to speak, come on now. I'll get to say "I" when he gets through.
Yeah, we'll just go mask burning in here. You all saw me swearing, the testimony, you and the Spanish.
All right, y'all have a seat. Got the background, this is in Ms. Terry Anulwich's district and, well, you have a seat and then we'll let... Yeah, yeah. I know that the applicant's here and I know that Ken Sudruth is here, so.
Yes, I'd actually like to invite Ken Sudruth up to give some background on the issue. Thank you, Ken. You have put a lot of work into this. Your staff has put a lot of work into this and I very much appreciate the time and attention that you've given to every detail in this presentation. Thank you.
Thank you. A lot of this, it was in the summary that Mr. Taylor had talked about, but this is a request from Branch Capital. They did submit this request back in July. It went through several amendments or modifications through staff review. We ultimately got to the point in preparing it for the November Planning Commission meeting that staff had indeed recommended approval with conditions. Planning and zoning did meet on the 11th as stated and they did recommend a 7-0 denial. From there, it came to Mayor and Council for your meeting on the 18th of November, at which time the applicant had requested that the item be tabled, which you did approve and it was tabled until tonight's meeting, December 2nd. Obviously, we know where this is, but it does contain eleven point zero-three acres of land. It is, has an existing zoning of mixed-use conditional, meaning that there are conditions with that. They are proposing to maintain that same classification. The difference here has to do with modifying the currently approved site plan and the elevations that go with that. Here we have the zoning map and the future development map. Zoning map, obviously on the left, you can see, that's in red, is the commercial areas as well. On the right side, the subject property is highlighted and that does contain that mixed-use classification. Under future development, it does contain a mixed-use classification for that entire area. Again, the applicant is proposing the following changes to the currently approved zoning of the property. One is the approval of modifications to the currently approved site plan as well as approval of new elevations for all of the buildings. Under significant constraints to the site, one of the controlling factors associated with any kind of development on the Johnquah site, whether it's this development or some other development in the future, is that of parking. The previously approved TAD project included a parking deck that almost all of which was constructed, that the proposed construction would be built over. And one of the reasons that the actual previously approved project became a TAD was because of the economic issues associated with that development and the parking garage. It was not sustainable without TAD support. The parking deck provided the ability to support all the associated retail within the project. The parking deck, in essence, provided the but-for test that is required of TAD funds. But for these funds, the project would not happen. The current proposal from Branch Properties does not include a request for TAD funds. Given the recent economic downturn, one of the major centerpieces of the original proposal, which was a grocery store, is no longer realistic. Both the developer and the city have been told by several parties, including Publix, that they are not interested in the site. As such, no anchor-type grocery store is shown in the current proposal. Without an anchor, the complexion of any development on this site is altered. All the parking spaces in the current plan will be surface parking. As a result, in order to maintain the appropriate balance and ratios between constructive square footage and the necessary required parking spaces, only so much development can occur. What you see on the screen is the currently approved site plan. I do have some fly-ins to outline things. What was entitled Building B contained twenty thousand five hundred square feet as well as thirty-three apartments. That would be a mixed-use building and it fronted along Atlanta Road. They also had a Building C, which was at the corner of Spring and Atlanta. Not only did it have a plaza area, but it contained a two-story building that had nine thousand five hundred square feet as well as twenty thousand square feet of retail in the, in the two buildings that were there. Building D, which was the biggest building on the site, contained forty-three thousand three hundred square feet of retail and one hundred seventy-one units of apartment development. Building E, which was in the middle of the site, had fourteen thousand three hundred square feet of retail and sixty apartments. And then finally, the Building F, which originally was scheduled for a Publix, was a little over forty-one thousand square feet. As I stated, most of this development was, was proposed to be built over top of a parking deck. The deck itself had a thousand spaces. The surface parking, which you can see on the screen, consisted of three hundred spaces. These are the currently approved building elevations. We haven't shown you everything, but we have shown you what the typicals were to look like. This is the new proposed site plan. Obviously, it's different because it does not have the parking garage underneath it. It has two freestanding buildings proposed along Atlanta, one closer to the corner. That one has ten thousand five hundred square feet of retail and then one furthest from the intersection, nearest the intersection with Church Street, is proposed for six thousand square feet. In between those two buildings is a mixed-use building with eight thousand square feet of retail, another six thousand square feet of non-residential uses and we were, we're not sure exactly how many apartments are in this building, but overall, there's two hundred and eighty-eight units proposed. Then the other two buildings there are the, indeed, the apartment buildings, so the combination of the mixed-use building and these two buildings equate to two hundred and eighty-eight units. There are also some traffic improvements that we are requiring. If we start at the upper-left corner, there at Church Street, that is a full-access driveway to be able to go left, right, as well as straight. It will be, contain a light and the light is indeed to be stalled by the developer. There is another closer to the Spring Road, Atlanta Road intersection, another access point and that is a right-in route only. And then the access point off of Spring is right-in, right-out only as well. Traffic improvements along Spring include the completion of the multi-use trail there from the intersection all the way up to the pedestrian bridge. These are the new proposed elevations. I'm sure the applicant can speak more about them later in the meeting, but this is what they have provided us. It's basically a four-story product outlined as I did on the, on the site plan as to what each one contained. Again, other elevations. And this is the, just a proposal taking how they see the corner of Atlanta and Spring looking, again, this request does not have that corner lot. The original request did have that, this, and they did own that, but because of the bankruptcies and foreclosures and the like, this particular tract of land on the corner ended up in a different hand, ultimately owned now is owned by a bank that the applicant has indeed worked with, but they have not come to an agreement as of now as to what that price should be for that corner. So, right now, the corner is not included with this proposal.
But Ken, whatever that becomes, it has to come back to this body for approval, right?
That's correct. Scott Cochran and I, we've talked extensively about, about that corner and we believe that whatever does happen, as you've said, Mayor Bacon, will have to come back, not, not just in front of me, it's Community Development Director, but also go to council for consideration. Here are, we were supplied and again, we are, we are just presenting to you what has been presented to us, some of the interior finishes for the proposed apartment units. These, I believe, are similar to finishes that they have in another project they have close by at West Village. And then, again, some of the community amenities, how, what the style and the finish would look like for the units here. Pictures of the subject property, we, obviously, we all know what it looks like. You know, they got started, as Mr. Taylor stated in his remarks, the economy got them and it just literally stopped one day. They were there one day and the next day, they weren't. You know, they had gotten started on the piers for the parking garage, put in some of the drainage infrastructure. Obviously, the detention pond is out there as well. There were a lot of questions and comments that came up at the planning and zoning meeting. And I'm just, we have sort of bullet pointed those for you. They are in the presentation material that you have on your desk as well. But some of the concerns that were voiced at the planning meeting concerned, you know, the Braves announcement, which actually occurred that very day. There were statements made about no more apartments, we need a grocery store on the site, we need more commercial on the site, the project needs to be more friendly and inviting to integrate it with the nearby communities. Some people feel the development is closed off to the community. The corner is a gateway into Smyrna, we need more commercial than apartments. Traffic will be dramatically increased for the worse. The city has spent several years removing apartments, why would we approve more? Concern for the transient renting of renters was expressed. Impact on the school, concern about Section 8 housing, as well as the site needs to create a sense of place. Finally, the last three is, is it still a mixed-use project? Effect on the property values and why is the corner lot at Spring and Atlanta and Spring Road not included with the proposal, which I just sort of answered. Any of those of you who are at the town hall meeting, the issue about mixed-use, is it still a mixed-use, came up. I answered that one at that time by saying, yes, it's still a mixed-use. The ordinance does not specifically define what a mixed-use is. It doesn't give particular thresholds on that. Obviously, it becomes at some point... Obviously, it becomes, at some point, a judgment call on my part as the director. But with the 24,500 square feet of commercial, I very much feel that it is still a mixed-use Because of the comments that were made at the planning commission meeting, I just wanted to give some other information about owner-occupied versus renter percentages as of 2012. And this does come from the American Community Survey, which is an arm of the census, that Smyrna has a little over 52% owner-occupied and almost 48% rental. Dunwoody at close to 54 owner-occupied and 46 rental. Sandy Springs at 46 and 1/2 owner-occupied, 53 and 1/2 on rental, and so forth on that. Sometimes, we talk about these numbers, but we have a tendency to speak about them in isolation. And so I did want at least a point of reference for you so that you could see where we ranked. This is just factual information, as I said, that we've pulled from the census. Occupied housing, which is slightly different than what I just presented, this is specifically for Smyrna. Our total number of housing units is a little over 25,000. Of the single-family townhomes, duplexes, and condos, that's 11,911 apartments or 7367. Other rental units, which would be rental, single-family, or townhouses, or duplex, or the condos, 3,668. And then vacancies are a little over 2,300 number of units are vacant. Percentages are out to the side, just again, so that you understand how our market is today. As stated earlier, staff indeed had recommended approval. I will show you another slide at the end, talking about the planning commission's recommendation. But staff had sent a recommendation to the planning commission, and as is your policy and desire, you want both recommendations presented to you. So from the staff recommendation for approval, we attached several conditions. There is a stipulation letter that the applicants, through their attorney, Garvis Sams, had submitted to us, but we have modified some of those stipulations there in that first item, which is classified as under Item 1, and then it's A, saying that under the stipulations applicable to residential components shall be amended to include the following interior finishes for the multifamily units. These finishes were actually improved upon between the planning commission and tonight to sort of highlight the Class A aspect and to better ensure that they indeed were Class A-type of apartments. So that includes pendant lighting, bathroom cabinets being of equal or similar qualities to kitchen. You can't have sheet vinyl flooring. You have to have tile flooring, both the kitchen and the bathrooms. All bathrooms shall have tiled tub shower surrounds. All kitchen and bathroom counters and cabinets shall be of a solid surface, granite or similar material. Laminate countertops are prohibited. All countertops shall be what is known as a Horizon Star countertop, and all kitchen sinks are undermounted sinks as opposed to just sitting in. They have to be mounted up under. That gives a flat surface. That was reflected in those shots of the interior sides. We also have added that they've got to be in substantial conformity with the master plan that was submitted to us, created by planners and engineers dated November 6th, as well as the elevations, which were submitted on October 22nd. Obviously, they have to meet all of the city's desired guidelines with our urban design district that has -- this proposal has gone to the UDC committee just for the appearance factor. They don't comment on the land use. They did recommend that those elevations that have been submitted were acceptable and have approved those. The minimum floor area for the attached dwellings and so forth cannot be less than an average 900 square feet. And then we get into the composition of how they are to look. Staff wanted to make sure that the photographs that you saw indeed were what was built if this is approved. And as such, these ratios came up that you had to have a mixture of elements included but not limited to brick, stone, and stucco. A minimum of 40% brick is required on all sides of the building that are visible from Atlanta Road and or Spring Road, and all other sides of the buildings are allowed to use 30% brick. All corners, however, have to be fully bricked, as indicated in those renderings. No building elevation shall be comprised of more than 20% lap siding. And any buildings that abut the external road race shall not be permitted to utilize the lap siding for any elevation facing those roads. Again, the purpose of these requirements is not to be redundant, but is to help ensure that what the picture that's being painted to you tonight by the application, as well as the applicant, is indeed achievable for that. Again, we get into the retention-detention pond has to be screened, utilities underground. I've already mentioned the traffic improvements that are required, the normal requirement that you cannot bury debris on any lot or common area. With regard to streetlights, they have to be decorative, and they do need to be equivalent to the Georgia power fixtures we have in the Market Village down here. Obviously, they have to comply with what the tree ordinance requires. All landscape plans have to be done. This is standard requirement by Georgia Registered Landscape Architect. All common areas to be sotted and landscaped and irrigated. All air conditioning units, transformers shall be screened, fully screened for view from any public right-of-way. Again, I'm just sort of hitting the highlights of this. Again, all apartments shall be maintained in a Class A for first-class manner, meaning that what we expect is that they have a professional firm dealing with their landscaping on this to make sure that it doesn't deteriorate. Obviously, with the interior of the units, we expect the same to occur. Finally, the concrete sidewalks would be permitted around buildings 150, 300 designated on the site plan. All their sidewalks and crosswalks have to be constructed with the use of the brick pavers. These would be the paver similar to what is out there. We have already put in those pavers on the subject property side, and we expect them to not only continue that up, Spring Road is indicated, but also internally into the interior of the property, and that's why those building references were made. As well as all the windows that are proposed need to be reflective of the views that they have actually given us in what is titled AR 01 through AR 05 for that. So the staff feels confident that the photos that you have been given, or the drawings, the renderings that you have in front of you, along with these conditions, will indeed achieve that look if you decide to approve this request. The planning board recommended, with a seven-o vote at their meeting on November 11th, to recommend denial. Some of the reasons for that had to do with those summary lists that I had outlined previously. Now, what can you do with this request tonight? What are the possible outcomes that you have? Obviously, you can approve the request. You could approve the request with conditions, which was staff's recommendation. You can approve the request with conditions and with modifications, if you feel like it. You can deny the request, which was the planning commission's recommendation. Just as a reminder, in Section 1507 of our zoning ordinance, it does talk about if an application affecting the same property should not be submitted more than once every 12 months if it indeed is turned down. You can table the request to a date certain, and you could allow the request to be withdrawn, and that's explained in another section, which is listed there. I will leave you with the proposed site plan. I am happy to answer any questions. I apologize for the length of the presentation, but given how long we have been working with this plan, I felt it was appropriate to give you all of the history as quickly as I could, as well as the facts and figures that staff knows them. But I am happy to answer any additional questions.
Before we get into any questions, I mean, the crowd's been great so far, very respectful. One of the most emotional issues that we deal with up here is rezonings, and it's because it affects people. Probably here tonight, there's some folks that are going to be in favor of the proposal. It'll be people that are going to be not in favor of it. I just -- Smyrna's always really come to the top whenever it comes to being respectful for each other and don't take things personal. It's business, and your neighbor can be for it, you can be against it. As I mentioned at the very beginning of the meeting, those that were sworn in will have an opportunity to speak during the hearing. But if we just be respectful, I think things will work out fine. Any questions of Ken? Mr. Welch?
And Ken, I apologize. You called this afternoon to ask if I had any questions, but I just picked up on something, and I think it meets the requirements no matter. But I picked up on, in the parking requirements, parking for commercial is based upon 24,500 square feet, where up above it mentions we have 30,500. What's the difference? It looks like what is required is 584.5, where we're providing 586, but down below, where the parking required says 24,500 times 5 per thousand, but it's not -- based on what I'm seeing, it should be 30,000 times 5. Is that correct or incorrect?
It is confusing. How about that?
That's why I'm asking the question.
The 24.5 is what it's based on. That is the commercial. The other 6,000 that's shown there for a total of 30,500, that 6,000 is non-residential. That's part of the apartment aspect that it provides for the leasing facility, their little cyber café, and their fitness center. That's not included in the retail, but it is different than the units. So it was separated out. That doesn't trigger any additional requirements beyond what's normally required for the units or for the commercial. So the number, the 30,500 is correct, but 6,000 of that doesn't go into the parking calculation.
Because they're already there, right?
Yes.
The tenant's already there.
Well, and it is assumed that that's very temporary parking for future residents if they're using the leasing aspects. That's a very small amount, so there is not another requirement for that.
And I want to ask you a question. These pictures of the proposed building elevations, they're a little bit misleading in the fact that it looks like there's different shops and stuff like that, but it is my impression that the buildings, except for the one on Atlanta Road, are just going to be apartment units. Is that correct?
There are -- let me, if...
They're not going to have all the awnings and the tables and the...
No, the only -- I mean, the applicant can better speak to that later, but yes, they would have all of that. If you recall, and if the cameraman could put, just come back to the computer screen here, the proposed site plan, if you look just on the Atlanta Road, that first building that's closest to the intersection, I want to say it's like 10,500. That's a freestanding building, has no apartments in it. That could be one use, or it could be broken into several uses, and it could indeed have the awnings and so forth that's illustrated there. The middle building is the mixed-use building, but the bottom floor is the combination of the non-residential and commercial. There are no apartments that would have direct access to Atlanta Road. And then the last building at Church is another freestanding commercial building.
Because some of these remind me more of the other property, West Village, than they do what I understood that this was going to be, with the shops and the restaurants and the...
Yeah, I mean, there's indeed, you know, my guess is the majority of the commercials probably will end up as restaurants, but that it doesn't preclude them from having shops if that's indeed what the market allows. But those bottom floors in that middle building are indeed to be commercial or non-residential.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Garvis Sams, I know, was somewhere out there. He represents the applicant. Garvis, you want to come forward and...
For the record, my name is Garvis Sams. I'm with the law firm of Sams, Larkin, and Huff, just up the street in Marietta. I represent Branch Capital Partners, and I have tonight with me representatives and the principals of Branch. Also, we have our engineer, planners and engineers collaborative with us. So at the appropriate time, we can answer any questions or respond to any concerns that you may have. Obviously, there's some technical details, a lot of which Mr. Sudruth has done an excellent job of covering those. Of course, this property indeed needs very little. By way of introduction, it's an 11-acre, sort of irregularly shaped piece of property. On the north, it's bounded by the CSX Railroad; on the south, by Spring Street; and of course, on the west, by Atlanta Road. This is in an area on the future land use map that is shown as mixed use. It's anticipated for mixed use. It was changed at the time when you rezoned it back in 2007. Similarly, the zoning classification is also MU or mixed use as well. For those of you like Mayor Bacon, who have been around a while and spent his entire life in the city of Smyrna, then you know the site very well. This was the longstanding, very successful John Qua Plaza Shopping Center that was enjoyed by many. But in 2007, it was demolished, and the reason it was demolished is for purposes of paving the way for the development that you approved in 2007. And when I say development, it was a large mixed-use development. In fact, the rezoning in 2007 was so large, so massive, so intense in terms of scope and breadth, that it was reviewed by the Atlanta Regional Commission. It was reviewed by the Georgia Regional Transportation Authority. It was determined a development of regional, not just of citywide or countywide, but of regional impact. And let there be no mistake, it is undisputed that it is presently approved for 300 apartment units. It is presently approved for 188,000... It is presently approved for 188,000 square feet of retail. It just simply hasn't been built yet for a number of reasons, and some of which we'll get into. But also, let me emphasize the point that even though it's subject to a rezoning that is presently in place, we call it an overzoning for a number of reasons, in that in 2007, the 188,000 square feet of retail was a fiction that was created for purposes of apparently better positioning it from a political perspective, or for whatever reason, but even then, and certainly now, that was unrealistic, an overzoning of the property. Since 2007, it's laying undeveloped. It's an eyesore. Your city attorney hasn't said this, but I imagine he looks out his front door and sees it, and has for the past seven years. Instead of an eyesore, though, it should be a focal point. It should be an aesthetically pleasing entry or portal, gateway, if you will, into the city of Smyrna, particularly on the south side. Of course, what Branch proposes is to do away with the overzoning, to create a downzoning situation, to allow for 288 Class A amenitized multifamily units. And Class A amenitized, those are not just buzzwords. Those are words that mean something, as Mr. Sudruth has tried to define, and as I'll define more fully. So 288 Class A amenitized multifamily units, 24,500 square feet of retail, another 6,000 square feet of non-residential or retail-related, the cyber café, the fitness, the workout area, the leasing office, all integral parts of the residential community. And then there's another 5,000 square feet in the back building. This is for the resort-type club rooms and meeting facilities that you've seen. So there's actually a total of 35,500 square feet of non-residential, non-residential space. You're at a crossroads. You've been at crossroads before. Many of you on this council were at crossroads in 2007 with respect to this very critically positioned piece of property, and you're presented with the unique opportunity to embrace the generational differences of those that here tonight will articulate. You can embrace it, or in the alternative, you can remain idle and accept the unintended consequences of an overzoning that occurred in 2007. I'm cognizant of the fact and the path that this city takes with respect to remaining idle, and it's just simply not in your DNA. And we ask that, of course, you take that into consideration, and that what is an eyesore and what is an unintended consequence of an overzoning in 2007 not remain as such. The good thing, or one of the good things, is unlike the original developer, Branch has a proven blend of investment and operating experience, is highly skilled in this type of development to the tune of over $2 billion worth of commercial space that it has developed, managed, owned, and operated over the past 40 years. There is not a more appropriate developer for this piece of property. We would be willing to stipulate, as a condition predicate to the approval of the rezoning, that Branch or one of its affiliates be the sole developer of this property. I know that many of you were not aware of the developer at the time, who, it doesn't need to be named, but the fact of the matter is, it's doubtful whether that particular developer or any of its subsequent title holders had the wherewithal to be able to bring this overzoning to fruition, and I think you're seeing that come to pass now. Branch can do it, has done it, and will continue to do it for 40 more years, hopefully. Key point, it is far more important to prove what's going to be a highly successful project than to try to force a project for development, which may invoke nostalgia, which may invoke some feel-good on the part of those that may be citizens of the city of Smyrna, but which ultimately fails in the current market, or ultimately fails in the market which is going to come to pass. Because if it fails, then that unrealistic overzoning continues to be a blight on the community, or continues to be neutral. And you cannot afford the blight. You cannot afford this site being neutral, because what the site is going to provide is a catalyst for the organic growth of the city of Smyrna that you have seen. While this application's been pending, we've, of course, interfaced with Mr. Sudruth and his staff, and when I say his staff, I don't mean to denigrate the importance of anyone, because it's the city engineer, the public works director, the city attorney, everyone that you have on your community development staff as well, but they have recommended approval. This is a staff that you, time and again, I don't know a percentage, I haven't looked it up, but I'm sure that you, time and again, a majority of the time, you have followed that staff's recommendation for approval. We've agreed to every single stipulation and condition of zoning the staff has put forth. We have been able to adjust our plans accordingly with staff's vision and staff's view for this site. In addition to that, it's, of course, worth noting that on November the 14th, we appeared before the Urban Design Committee with respect solely to the issue of the architecture that you've seen, but nevertheless, we appeared before that committee, which also unanimously recommended that the application be approved with respect to the architectural style and composition of the buildings that you've seen. In addition to diverging from the overzoning of the property in 2007, you see we have diverged from the inclusion of the pin corner, the parcel, at the northeast quadrant of the intersection of Atlanta Road and Spring Road. A good reason for that is the original developer property owner was not able to hold on to it. It fell into foreclosure. There were bankruptcies involved. There's now a Florida bank that owns that property. At first, when we started into this in the summer, they had some extremely unrealistic expectations with respect to what the property was worth, at least in terms of our knowledge of the real estate market and the retail market as well. Now, luckily, they're represented by a local representative, a local attorney, who's brought some reality to the situation, if you will. So we have been able to negotiate with them to acquire the easements necessary for the stabilization of the site, because right now, it's just a big mound of dirt with some grass, I guess, and weeds growing on it. But you saw the photograph or the elevation rendering depicting how we envisioned it'll be, at least until such time as we can ultimately purchase it. Because frankly, candidly, if you look at the site plan, you look at it closely, we've master-planned around that pin corner, around that northeast quadrant, so that we provided the infrastructure, we provided the intra-parcel access between our site and that site. And the vision is ultimately, maybe to have a building on it, but probably more likely to have monumentation, artwork, other emblems of the city's brand, so that in perpetuity, that will forever be a portal, an entryway, a gateway to the city of Smyrna that will forever brand the city and that site. And quite candidly, if you look at it, if you look at that site and the size of it in terms of its positioning also, and proximity to that signalized intersection, at a little less than .7 or 7 tenths of an acre, it's extremely problematic in terms of development because of the ingress to and egress from the site, because of its proximity, again, to that signalized intersection. So I don't see it standing alone as a sign. I do see it becoming a part of what we have, and again, we do intend to ultimately purchase and develop it, and right now, we have a great relationship with the bank and its attorney in terms of negotiations to get the proper easements necessary to stabilize the site. As I mentioned, development, once it's approved, and then once it's begun, and particularly when it's completed, it becomes a catalyst for other development. And you can congratulate yourselves, certainly all of you can, on the success of Market Village and the positive effect that that's had upon the city, and the catalyst that it has been for other development within the city as well. And I think you can recognize that the John Quel site, once it's developed, will ultimately serve as the same catalyst in an organic way, and hopefully, it'll follow with Belmont. That will happen as well. I will tell you this today, that we've learned as of a couple of days ago, that Wood Partners, who was to be in the development position with respect to the multifamily for the Halprin or the Belmont site, has gone out of contract, and they were not able to secure the requisite financing for that, so they are no longer in the picture. So that may put a different spin on things with respect to Belmont, but ultimately, it certainly doesn't have any bearing on the John Quel site. However, the organic part of city development necessitates that you bring to the city mass. It's necessary that you bring to the city density. It's necessary that you bring a robust and healthy environment, because without that, Market Village, which either luckily, or fortuitously, or for whatever reason, was able to withstand this downturn in the economy, may not survive the next time around. But I can promise you that there'll be disastrous effects if the city, either through John Quel or through other means, does not gain the density, the mass that it needs in order to support the retail. And everyone that's going to follow me, that's going to talk in opposition to this, or perhaps even in favor of it, is going to bemoan the fact that we don't have the retail that you'd like to see. But we have a developer who recognizes where retail works and where it doesn't, and what type does and what type doesn't, and the timing for the implementation of the retail component of this. You've got to be able to outlast the vagaries of the type of economy that we've just gone through or just now emerging from. Now, you'll note again, there's no stipulations. If you look back at your minutes from 2007, there's no stipulations or conditions that govern in any, not one whit, the type of apartments that were to be developed under that scenario. In fact, the fact of the matter is, you have absolutely no control over that site should someone come in and try to develop the property as it zones. No control whatsoever. However, right now, with the stipulations and conditions that we've crafted, the staff have imposed, that Mr. Sudruth has articulated, you've got units with, that do form a Class A amenitized multifamily unit with nine-foot ceilings, granite countertops, 42-inch upper cabinets, internet, crown molding, minimum rents of $1,200 and up. I mean, equate a $1,200 rent. That equates into a homeownership of $275,000 or $300,000 home. Additionally, even though the approved development in 2007 didn't include any of the things that we have, we've stipulated and conditioned upon ourselves a state-of-the-art fitness center, resort-style swimming pool, resort-style club room, central postural area, also the cyber café, meaningfully positioned pedestrian connectivity between the commercial component and the residential component as well, state-of-the-art leasing center. And I don't know if you've noticed it or not, but not a lot has been made of it, but it's in your staff's recommendation for approval, and that is, we've agreed to at least 25 otherwise permitted uses under the MU classification that I can promise you, you would not want to see in there. We have prohibited those and self-imposed those stipulations. Not hard to do on some of them. Clearly, Branch recognizes the inappropriate onerous nature of those stipulations, or excuse me, of those particular uses, but if you look back at your 2007 minutes, there's no such prohibition, and anything allowed under MU classification could come in. You've been bombarded with misconceptions, with preconceived notions, with misperceptions regarding what's been proposed. You've also gotten some very meaningful, useful information from all sides. It's inherent in an emotional, emotionally charged set of circumstances like this for people to say what's undermined, of whether or not it's borne by the facts at hand. But for instance, we've heard about the devastating effect that this will have upon the school system, the school resources, its operations, and the student population, when in fact, as of today, for instance, with the same unit mix in West Village, phases one and two of the multifamily, there's 406 residents. Seven of those residents are 18 years of age or younger. We will have absolutely no effect upon the school system, and if you have any doubt about that, check with the school system representatives to confirm that. Also, another type of idea that's been bandied about is the devastating effect upon the traffic in the downtown area. And obviously, everyone's experienced AMP and peak hours along Atlanta Road and the problematic aspects of turning, turning movements, and levels of service. But in this particular instance, with this downzoning in juxtaposition to the overzoning that occurred in 2007, a layperson can see that 188,000 versus 24,500 square feet of retail generates less traffic. A layperson can determine that 288 as opposed to 300 multifamily units generates less traffic. But rather than relying on common sense, we were charged with the responsibility of securing the services of A&amp;R Engineering to perform a traffic study, which shows that the levels of service at your respective intersections at Spring and Atlanta, the level of service at the other affected intersections, particularly the one at Church in Atlanta, which will be signalized, will have no diminishment in terms of level of service, either in AM or PM peak hours. That's a traffic study that your staff has. And again, I mentioned, I don't mention it offhandly, but the installation of a traffic signal is not just stringing up a light. It's the synchronization of that, it's the audioized crosswalks, it's everything that you might can imagine to make a cutting, state-of-the-art, cutting-edge, state-of-the-art type of signalization, which is synchronized to allow traffic to flow even more smoothly than you could have ever have imagined. Branch's proposal tonight is for a mixed-use community. It's been designed as a walkable, pedestrian-friendly, it's new urbanistic, it's the kind of thing you want to see, community. It's upscale, it's a lifestyle development that'll translate into significant and positive economic impact for the city of Smyrna in terms of mass, density, and the things that it can provide. And it will be a development that will exceed $40 million, and this is a decision you've been thinking about, this is the things that have, or these are the things that have led you up to this after a six- or seven-year period. It's a $40 million development at the build-out. Additionally, and probably most importantly, as the catalyst or as the organic growth for the city of Smyrna, this is going to precipitate appropriate commercial and residential development along the Atlanta, Spring Road, and Concord Road corridors, particularly in view of Concord's multi-use trail that's in the process of being installed. You have to ensure a healthy retail area. Whether our retail is built or not, you've got to have density for this downtown central business district. At this time, I want to introduce to you Mr. Jack Haley and Mr. Jesse Shannon. They're going to make their way down and sit on the front row, and each one has a little bit to say. One about the construction, Jack is going to mention about the construction and the upscale finishes, also the fact that each one of these units are 100% convertible to condo without lifting a finger, if the market ultimately dictates that. And Mr. Shannon, Jesse Shannon, is going to be talking about some of the retail aspects of this in terms of what's available in the market and what's out there, and why we have 24,500 square feet of retail space as opposed to the unhealthy and unnecessary plan of 188,000 square feet that was approved in 2007. Before I relinquish the podium, I simply ask that you follow your professionals' recommendations. They are, in fact, the professionals. You are the professionals and the policymakers as well, but hopefully, you rely on your staff as you have before, and your Urban Design Committee. With that, I'll introduce one of the vice presidents for Branch Capital. This is Mr. Jack Haley. I'm going to swear them in, Mr. Mayor, because they didn't come down.
Thank you, Mr. Sams. My name is Jack Haley. Mayor and council, thank you for your consideration in this matter and allowing me to speak. I've been working on this development for two or three years, so forgive me if I stutter and I'm a little nervous. First of all, I'm not going to talk in depth about the architecture. We've all seen the elevations. I think generally, everybody likes them, and they've been approved unanimously by the UDC. But for those that haven't seen them, please understand that our elevations are going to be timeless, they're going to be substantial, and they're going to be proper for this area. They're going to look appropriate. The proposed look will be complementary to the neighboring Market Village. Our development will be built to a level of finish and craftsmanship that will be equal or better to the Market Village and, of course, Ivy Walk. Further, there's been comments through the weeks that people have discussed about our setbacks and how close we are to Atlanta Road. I would like to say to council that you all developed a plan on how far the setback should be. should be and how far our building should be from Atlanta Road, and we have complied with every one of your setbacks. We are, our building is exactly the proper distance from Atlanta Road where you told us to put it. I am going to talk about the level of finish of our units. We can call them four-lease condos, or we can call them apartments. Bottom line is they're condo-level four-lease units. And I've got four or five things that designate what makes up that type of unit. First of all, they're not eight-foot ceilings, and they're going to be the nine, 10, or in some places, 16-foot ceilings in the top floors. Just depends on where the unit falls. They're going to be voluminous units. We're going to have crown molding throughout the units, just like you would find in your house. Further, we're going to have a large base throughout the base of the unit. So the crown molding, the voluminous rooms, and the base are making them feel very rich. The money is going to be spent in the kitchens, just like in condos. We're going to have granite countertops, not granite bar tops, but the new type of bar top, which is a Horizon flat top, as you guys have probably seen in some of these pictures. Over these chef's tops, is what they're called, we're going to have hip and chic and cool pendant lighting hanging down that are illuminating the chef's top. Then there's also going to be track lighting in the kitchen and track lighting in the living room. Further in the kitchen is going to be large 42-inch upper cabinets. Another thing that is never found in apartments, we're going to put a full pantry beside the refrigerator. That's a really nice amenity that people like, that they also like and get in condos. Lastly, in all the kitchens are going to be full tile backsplashes. So this kitchen is going to, when you walk into this kitchen, it's going to be a kitchen that all of us will like to live in. The bathrooms will be the exact same finishes, the same cabinets, the same countertops, the same fixtures, the same faucets, high-end. Without going into every room and every room, let's just understand that the finishes in these units are going to be equal to, if not better, to all the units that are being built in Smyrna today, the houses. I've been in them, I've walked them recently in the last month, the townhomes that are being built. They're going to be the exact same, the insulation in the walls, the insulation in the ceiling. Everything is going to be the exact same, if not better. So let's understand, this deal was originally zoned for 300 apartments, 304 lease condos. We're building 304, or 288 four-lease condos, that when a condo market returns here in Smyrna, these can be converted to condos at any time. We have agreed to that in our stipulations, and that's what we're going to stick by. What most people don't know about is the amenities that go along with this new type of 2014, 2013 apartment deals. First of all, in all the common areas, we're going to give free Wi-Fi. And I'm not just talking about the cheap Wi-Fi you get in hotels, but you know, triple T1, fast, free Wi-Fi for everybody that lives there. They'll have the codes, and they'll be able to use it. Secondly, a large fitness center. Not the token fitness center that you guys all know of, that just has a treadmill and a free weight and in a closet somewhere, but a 2,000-square-foot fitness center that has over $75,000 worth of equipment, including large TVs, CrossFit equipment, a spin room, a yoga room, and free weights, plus weekly, I'm going to have in there fitness classes, yoga classes, Pilates classes, and spin classes. Anybody that lives in this development won't need to have a gym membership anywhere. This fitness room will be state-of-the-art, and it'll be free for our residents. Most of our residents have tablets and laptops, so I don't need to put this big computer room as of the cybercafes of years ago. But what I have to do now is, at the end of every hallway, I'm going to provide a print station, a nice printer with a computer where someone can come with their tablet and print or their computer and print. I'll provide the Wi-Fi, they provide the tablet, I'll provide the ink. That's what residents want nowadays. On top of that, a good many of our residents will work from home. They'll be traveling salespeople, they'll be, you know, working from home, they'll be there a lot. So what I'm going to provide to them is a large conference room, an eight-to-10-person conference room. Beside that conference room is a copier. Beside that is a full-service mail station with a FedEx pickup, a UPS pickup, a printer, all the paper and supplies they need. So these people will be able to live there, go down and have a conference room and work. This will all be at these apartments that are right in downtown Smyrna. But more importantly, we're going to have a lot of residents that are going to want to throw a bridal shower, a baby shower, a business lunch, or a holiday party. That happens, that's part of life. Well, we're going to provide them a large clubroom, a 2,000-to-3,000-square-foot clubroom where they can go and have this party, free of charge. But more importantly, this room is going to be a community room. It's not just going to be for our residents, but it's going to be for the city of Smyrna. The one I have right now in West Village, which is down in Cobb, it's used regularly, free of charge, by the Cobb Newcomers Association, the Oakdale Homeowners Association, the Ladies Cobb Bridge Club. They all come there and use our community room and visit our room, free of charge, and we provide it for them. It's a service, and they appreciate it. I'm going to provide that same service right downtown here, and it's going to be a fully amenitized room that's as nice as any room in Cobb County or in the city of Smyrna. So all these residents will be able to enjoy this. Lastly, these Class A four-lease condos are all about the pools. So I'm going to tell you what a resort-style pool entails, because that's what we're going to provide. First of all, it's a smartly-designed saline pool with many private areas. In other words, the pool's moving in and out, so a lot of people can hang out and have fun on their own. But more importantly, it's going to have about a thousand-square-foot, six-inch wet bathing deck. That's the hot thing nowadays. That's what everybody wants, is to be able to lay their chairs out in the water. That's what we're going to provide, that's what's going to be there, and they're going to love it. Secondly, adjacent to the pool is going to be a super-large cabana. That cabana is going to have soft seating in it, it's going to have an outdoor kitchen, which includes a refrigerator, an ice maker, and a grilling area. So when people are living in downtown Smyrna, they're going to be able to hang out by the pool, then they're going to be able to get food and grill out in this cabana, and then they're going to be able to walk to the Market Village and enjoy themselves. It's going to be a place that's going to attract good folks. Lastly, like I said earlier, we promote fitness. I'm a swimmer, so every development I do, I put a true 25-meter lap lane in. We provide every person in the community swim workouts and swim lessons if they want, so people can learn to swim, which is a great measure of fitness. All this is to say is that this development, among many other amenities, is going to be super-A-plus amenitized, it's going to be amenitized to the max. Moving on, who's going to live here? We've all talked about who's going to live here. First of all, the average age is going to be in the 30s. There's going to be some 20s, there's going to be some 50s and 60s. Average age is probably going to be about 34-years-old, if I could guess. It's going to range between 32 and maybe 36-years-old that's going to live here. The average income is going to be between $70,000 and $80,000 per person, but on a household income, it's going to be about $120,000. 288 units we're building, the average income is $120,000 is what's going to be here. So it breaks down to three different groups of people. First of all is the young professionals. Those are people that grew up in Smyrna and want to live back by their families. Or two are people that want to move to Smyrna but don't know Smyrna and want to figure out the roads and the places where they live and everything before they buy a home and say they want to settle down for a year. So those are the young professionals. They've been here before, or they're trying to learn the development. Second, as we all know, homes are selling in Smyrna fast, which is great. Unfortunately, the recent government census confirms that 40% to 50% of all homes bifurcate due to adult separation. That sucks, but that's the truth. So when that happens, the party that has to leave needs to live in a high-end place. They want to keep up with what they've lived in, and they want to stay by their family. Right now, Smyrna doesn't have that option for them. So that's going to be a large portion of our population. Lastly, the largest growing population of renters in high-end amenitized apartment communities in the country right now, the fastest-growing, is empty nesters. People that are 60, their kids went to school, they've come home, they finally got them out, they've sold the home, this big home, they don't want to go buy a townhome because they just lost all this value, but they want to still be free. And so what they've realized is, these apartments are where they don't have a commitment. They could pay this rent, and they could travel to Europe and travel to see their grandkids and not worry about their mail and not worry about this and that that comes with the home. That's the fastest-growing. They say, within five to 10 years, in the high-end apartments, 50% of the renters are going to be empty nesters. We don't have that here in Smyrna right now, that option. That's coming, that's available. Who will not live here? There'll be fewer than 10 people under the age of 18 that live in this development when it's full. West Village right now has 480 units. We're only talking about 288 units. West Village has 488 units, and as of today, I counted them, as of today, we have seven children under the age of 18. So if there's discussions that this development is going to affect the schools and hurt the schools, it's absolutely not founded, and it's not true. Lastly, what will these folks pay to live here? The average rent is going to be $1,200. There are going to be some units in the 900s, and some as high as $3,000, but the average is going to be about $1,200 a month. So let's talk about that in all these houses that are being built in Smyrna. $1,200 relates on a mortgage, at today's rate, to a house that's about $250,000 to $300,000. So we have renters-by-choice living here that ultimately can buy a $300,000 home. So let's look at it this way. Based on this data, we're going to build 288 units that in a couple of years are going to be filled with residents that are going to populate downtown Smyrna that can build, that can live in $300,000 homes. 288 units that are worth about $300,000. These people, when they move out, one out of every four of these people will buy a home. That's a fact, nationwide, in Class A apartments, one out of every four people buy a home. Another fact is, is about 80% of those people buy a home in this area, in the area they lived in. So understand that when people move in here, they're going to move out to buy a home, and they're probably going to move, buy a home in this area. Lastly, I do want to say one thing, and Mr. Samms hit on this. Branch, we're a 40-year-old company, and we've been here a long time, and we're a conservative company, okay? We know development, and we know retail, and we know multifamily. We currently own over $150 million worth of real estate in the greater Smyrna and Cobb area. And I'm not saying that just to say a big number, but what I'm saying to that is that this is our bed, you know, and we wouldn't do anything in this area that we think would detriment our neighbors that are here behind us. So I want to say that we're a successful company because we move slow and we move in the right areas. So I think we've put together a very good proposal, and I would hope that, council, you would support it.
Okay. You did three lastlies.
Did I do three lasts? Sorry. When I was saying it to my daughter earlier, she said that as well.
Got one more, and then we're going to take some questions from some other folks. Thanks for the information, it was good.
Jesse Shannon, 3340 Peachtree Road, Suite 600, Atlanta, Georgia. I'm going to try to keep my presentation brief. I know there are a lot of people behind me that want to get up here and voice their concerns or hopefully support. But my job at Branch Properties, I'm Director of Acquisitions in the Retail Group, and I source, underwrite, and facilitate all of our retail shopping center acquisitions. And I think it's important that I get up here and touch on the retail market dynamics of this particular location. I do feel, having attended the planning and zoning meeting and the town hall meeting, that one of the major concerns is there is not enough retail in this particular area and even more directly on the Jonquil site. So I do, this has been belabored to death, but we do have a 40-year operating history. We've owned 110 shopping centers throughout that 40 years. 66 of the centers that we've owned are in Atlanta, which represent approximately 10 million square feet. So we understand retail, that is the backbone of our company. And we have reached out to every grocer that is either in this particular market already or that has voiced plans to come into this particular market. When I say market, Atlanta as a whole, as an MSA. And the Sprouts, the Earth Fairs, the Whole Foods, Trader Joe's, Publix, Kroger, have all turned the site down. It is not for lack of effort on our part. This is what we do. We are grocery-anchored retail shopping center developers. We also happen to have expertise in multifamily, but the core competency of our company is grocery-anchored retail development. And we have reached out to those groups, and the fact is, they are not coming here. They do their own research, these are sophisticated organizations, and they feel there are other sites in the immediate area that are either superior or that are already served by a competing grocer. So I just want to be clear that we have exhausted that potential. I know some of the people here are going to feel that there should be a grocery store here, we'd love to see it too, it's just not reality. We have to operate within the reality that we're dealt, and unfortunately, that is the hand that we were dealt at this time. So in talking about the retail, if you look at this particular site, within a two-mile radius of Jonquil Plaza, or what the former Jonquil Plaza was, there are 22 shopping centers, which represent 1.6 million square feet of retail. The vacancy rate on those 22 shopping centers on 1.6 million square feet is 23.5%. If you exclude anchor tenants like Publix or Kroger, or any of the other big boxes that you see out there, Walmart, Kohl's, whoever they may be, the shop vacancy, the local shop tenants, which is what we're proposing in our particular development, is 39%. On a relative basis, that's five times what we would like to see in a healthy market, five times. The average rental rate is $12.53 a foot on a net basis, which is literally half of what we would like to see to facilitate and to warrant new construction. So it simply, at this point, does not make sense for us to plow forward with 188,000 square feet of shop space in the absence of an anchor and the absence of a market that we feel like will bear it. What will absorb that vacancy is density. And what we feel is appropriate for this development, and that's what remains to be seen, is what you think, but we're here to solicit you to explain that what we think is appropriate is to increase residential density in downtown Smyrna, therefore becoming an economic driver and a demand driver for the retail in this particular market.
Just a quick question, I hate to interrupt.
Sure, go ahead.
Based on what you're telling, inform us then, is there going to be any retailers that are even going to survive in the development down there?
Yeah, no, I do feel the retail is going to survive, but it has to be on a limited basis, has to be appropriate for the amount of density that we're bringing to the site, and it has to be appropriate. We are certainly looking forward, I want to be clear, we're looking forward in the retail that we're developing, we're looking five, seven years out. This isn't a one-year snapshot that we're taking when we make a development plan. We're making a $40 million investment in this particular location, and this, for us, is a long-term commitment. So we are looking, we are looking forward by developing 24,500 square feet. What I want to be clear on is that there's absolutely no market, in our opinion, for 188,000 square feet. I don't believe there was a market in 2007, and that's why it's not here today. Even a $20 million TAD infrastructure credit couldn't facilitate that development. So what I'm basically explaining is, those are the retail realities in front of us, and we look at market research when we're going to make a $40 million capital investment in a particular location.
And you believe that you can 100% occupy the 288 units that you're going to build?
Absolutely. We wouldn't invest $40 million if we didn't believe we could, I can promise you that. You know, so, that being said... You know, so that being said, we've heard numerous times that, in these previous meetings, that John Quill is kind of the last great development site, you know, the pinnacle of the city. I'm not sure we necessarily disagree, but I will say that it's not the last development site. What we hope is that John Quill will serve as a catalyst for the redevelopment of the former gas station on the other corner of Spring, eventually the BP Gas Station, eventually Olive Kinne Corner, all the way down to CVS is low-density, low-rise office and retail. That whole pocket, we hope, would over time organically fill in. If you look at a successful downtown, for example, in Atlanta, like the city of Roswell, the city of Roswell is not one development. It's literally the conglomeration of hundreds of owners over time that was master-planned and well-thought-out. So we hope that this is one of many developments in this particular parket, area, and that it serves as a catalyst for future development and we certainly believe that it will. So, you know, in closing, look, we, I appreciate we do the community participation here. We don't always end up in hearings where we have the number of people that have shown up today. And I find it interesting, within a one-mile radius of John Quill Village, there's 9,800 residents, according to the 2010 U.S. Census. There's probably 100 to 150 people in this room. That means somewhere between 9,650 and 9,700 just didn't show up. So we do appreciate the opposition. We do feel like that it creates an environment where we can better improve upon our plan. I promise you, the first plan we submitted to staff was tweaked on numerous occasions and the result is a better plan and we feel that way. So, you know, I do, I do want to, in closing, say that my only regret in this process is that we met with representatives of Williams Park and Forest Hills and on numerous occasions, we extended an invitation to look at what a Class A amenitized multifamily project looks like. We just completed West Village Phase Two. It's a prime example. And my only regret in this process is that despite numerous invitations, no one took us up on the offer to actually truly understand the product. And I wish that were different. I wish that everyone was informed when they came in here and made a decision as to the future of this particular site. So, you know, sometimes the right decision, in our opinion, is not always going to be popular, but we do believe in what we're doing and we're prepared to make a substantial investment to support that. That's all. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay. If you'll have a seat. I think I'd like to hear from some folks that have been patiently waiting and y'all can take a deep breath. Tell us who you are, where you live at, and comments that you'd like to make.
I'm Howard Martin, 3435 Lee Street. I've been in Smyrna for 49 years. For the sake of time and for the other speakers, I'm going to read what I have written down. We are a major league city now and we don't need a minor league project as the entrance with our gateway to our city. Being a neighbor to a major league baseball stadium, we need a major league project on this location. We need restaurants, places for the players, their wives, other citizens to shop, eat and visit. A professional gambler never draws to an inside straight. I mean, as a gambler, you're betting it to come. Never once have I heard tonight the name of restaurants, the name of retail stores, promises is all I've heard. You can put any type of description or label on this product and no matter how you label it or describe it, it's an apartment project. We've got 35 of those already in Smyrna. We don't need tenants. We need people to buy into this city, not people to be here today and gone tomorrow. This is not the last chance that we will have on this location. By the Braves coming here, property values, businesses are going to flourish. By the way, as of right now, Smyrna doesn't have any type of places to shop such as Belks, Kohl's, Macy's, nor do we have restaurants. We can have these, excuse me, we can have these built by the time the stadium is built on this location. Let's give our residents something to be proud of and something that we visitors, that visitors want to come to Smyrna and shop and live. Let's give them a major league project. Smyrna is going to be on the map now and not a place that everyone goes through to get to somewhere else. 67, 60,000, 70,000, I heard $120,000 salaries tonight. If you make that money, why don't you buy your house? Good things come to those who wait. And people, I've been here, like I said, 49 years and I'm proud to be in Smyrna because it was my second home. But we don't need an apartment project with 288 apartments in this city. We need something on that corner that we can be really proud of and I look forward to this council right here turning this down tonight. Thank you for the time.
If you were sworn in, just come forward and don't be bashful. See, Lym, you should have got up here quicker.
My name's Jill Levens. I'm at 371 Hickory Acres. My husband was the person at the Planning and Zoning Board who first stood up and mentioned the Braves, being, no pun intended, a game changer for the city. We've heard about the grocery turning, I wish the gentleman was still here, the grocers turning down the site unanimously. No one has addressed, has anyone gone back to any retailer since the Braves announcement? I guess some of the branch executives are here now. I don't know if the gentleman who left the room is the one, the only one who can answer that.
I talked with John Harmon of Publix last week and he is a southeast-area real estate man.
I'm wondering if perhaps something like Academy Sports. You have to go all the way to Hiram to get there. Sports Authority is slightly overpriced. Dick's is far away. With the Braves showing their huge map of where all their ticket holders are, yes, the Braves will sell their own merchandise, but Academy Sports would make a great anchor in a place like this. I don't think necessarily people who want to have shopping and retail in Smyrna just want more grocery stores. I think that it bears revisiting what other anchors might potentially, I'm not saying that the residential apartments going into condos is a bad thing. I've seen A1 finishes. I don't doubt that they will do what they say they will do and I don't doubt that it will be beautiful. But I think that unless somebody can speak to us and say, yes, in the last three weeks we've gone back and revisited what might fit here in a retail setting, I think that should not be glossed over. And if they have an answer, I think many people besides myself might like to hear it.
My name is Sherry Klein. I live at 1608 Ivy Springs. I'm part of the Williams Park neighborhood. My name is Sherry Klein. I live at 1608 Ivy Springs Drive, part of Ivy Springs and part of Williams Park. And I am really disheartened to hear that y'all are going to even consider putting in more apartments. Right now you have a 10% vacancy rate and what we need to do is increase our property values, not flood the market with more. And I agree with what she just said a moment ago. It's a game changer with the Braves coming. We need to clearly look at this game changer and you might find that more anchor stores will want to come in. But there's definite need for retail shopping, good quality retail shopping, and I think you're going to lower all of our property values by putting in yet more apartments. And if you took a poll of everybody here, I dare say, I could be wrong, the vast majority of people here tonight that have sat through all of these speeches do not want more apartments. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Lym Ward, I live at 1496 Spring Street in Williams Park, the oldest neighborhood in Smyrna. And I will tell you, Mayor, that it was one of our proudest moments, the first time we heard you say Williams Park from the podium. That let us know that we had created a sense of place in our neighborhood, which we had worked and endeavored very hard to do. And that brought, that was brought together by something very similar. We opposed what we thought, not growth in general, but not the kind of growth that we wanted. And I think that's the issue here. Nobody expects this to be the 2007 plan. Nobody, no, this is not 2007. What I do, don't understand what organic catalyst for growth means. I do understand what a gated apartment community means. And that's the one thing we didn't hear. We didn't hear anything in Mr. South's presentation or in the developer's presentation that this is a gated community in the center of the city of Smyrna. It may be the wrong place at the right time. In terms of whether or not this is a mixed use, let me read you the definition of mixed use, not my definition of mixed use, for the biggest real estate groups in the United States. The International Council of Shopping Centers, the National Association of Industrial Office Properties, the National Multi-Housing Council, and the Building Owners and Management Association. In a 2007 presentation by some, at Georgia State University stated, "A mixed-use development is a real estate project with planned integration of some combination of retail, office, residential, hotel, recreation or other functions. It is a pedestrian-oriented and contains elements of a live-work-play environment. It maximizes space usage, has amenities and architectural expressions, and tends to mitigate traffic and sprawl." Now, the definition of a mixed-use development like that is certainly could be contrasted to what is a multi-use development, which has two or more land uses on the same site. But there's no integration and that's what we see here. We see a gated apartment community with just enough retail to get you over Mr. South's judgment about what mixed use is. He said at the Town Hall Meeting, and he said it here tonight, he judges what mixed use is on his own. That certainly doesn't meet this definition of mixed use and the definition and the mixed, and the reason that nobody was here protesting in 2007 was, it did seem like true mixed use to us. It seemed like apartments and I don't think people are here protesting apartments. People are here protesting a gated community on one of the premier sites in Smyrna. I agree with Mr. Sam's. This is a turning point for the city of Smyrna. This defines our sense of place for some time to come. Is that going to, are these folks going to fail? No, they're not. These are very smart developers, very slick presentation, and they're going to do what's in their economic best interest. But those, that amenitized development is completely cut off from the city of Smyrna. Are people going to walk to that? No, they're going to be behind those gates. They're going to get in those 500 or so parking spaces and drive out of those gates. They won't be walking, they won't be walking out to things in the city of Smyrna and we certainly won't be walking in through their gated community. This is the problem that we have. This is the wrong development, maybe not by the wrong developer, but at the wrong time. This is a massive development and it also sets a precedent for the other side of the street. Now we've got the same kind of scale and massing that's developed. We've got the same problem with a key corner in the city not being able to really identify itself with a sense of place. If we want to be another Cumberland Parkway, we want to be another wide spot in the road, we want to be a bedroom community for the city of Atlanta, so be it. It's the council's vote that counts on this. Planning and zoning heard our voice and said what they said. We are here to tell you that you should hear the voice of the citizens who don't want it. Zoning is uniquely within the legislative discretion of the city. Mr. Southers and his staff did a good job on the analysis of the factors, but that's what they're supposed to do. They're supposed to read the application on its face and, and present to you their professional opinion. Their professional opinion was, this is a development that likely will work and it likely will work. My question to you is, I'm not afraid that it won't work, I'm afraid that it will work, but it won't be the thing that we want and we'll be defining the city of Smyrna for the next 40 years to come. I just, thank you, my time is up.
Ken, I promise you that Ken Sudrath was a much younger man before all this started. He's aged quite a bit, yes, but it's part of the job.
Hello, I'm Keith Bentley. I live on Gilbert Street in Williams Park. I want to talk about some of the numbers here and I'm going to read some of this because there's math involved. But on October 25th, I was among a group of Smyrna citizens who met with representatives of Branch and their attorney to discuss this project. We citizens generally commented that Branch's proposed project is too heavily weighted to the residential side and falls far short on the commercial and retail we'd like to see at that site. We talked about the 2007 project and the basic rezoning of the subject site from general commercial to mixed use, which included 30% commercial, the majority of which was retail. In answer to those points, one of the branch representatives explained why his company can't justify a more balanced mix of uses. He showed us a map of the area with a circle drawn on it having a two-mile radius with John Quill as its center. He said the average household income in that circle is $55,000 per year, which is not high enough to attract retailers. What Smyrna needs to attract retailers is more rooftops with higher annual incomes. This project, he said, would produce those rooftops by bringing in young, white-collar professionals with incomes from $65,000 to $80,000 per year to live in these upscale apartments. That's, that's what we heard then. When the applicant mentioned those young professionals again at the Planning and Zoning Meeting on November 11th, he quantified their income as being between $60,000 and $70,000 per year. And at the town meeting on November 20th, applicant referred to the future John Quill residents as having household incomes of $60,000 to $65,000 per year. Heard a different number tonight. Assuming that we're using those numbers that were given to us previously, that two-mile radius circle currently has 4,372 households with incomes of $55,000 average income. We would gain 288 new households with incomes of $65,000, raising the household income within the circle to $55,618. On a citywide basis, it looks like this. The city, which now has 23,000 households with average incomes of $55,000, would gain 288 new households with incomes of $65,000, raising the household income across the city to $55,124. Here's the point. If the project is approved, Smyrna will gain a statistically insignificant $124 per household per year toward the goal of attracting retailers, even as we close out our most prime downtown retail properties to residential development. That's a trade-off we can live without. Please vote to deny this application. Thank you.
If y'all get closer, you've had more time to talk. Just give it.
I live on Roswell Street in Williams Park. I'll be speaking about the handout that you're all receiving right now. On page one, there's a graphic showing the percentage of commercial and residential for the Market Village, for the 2007 rezoning of John Quill, and for the current zoning before us this evening. The John Quill site, previously all commercial, was rezoned in 2007 to mixed use for a project which included 30% commercial use. Though not as intensely commercial as the Village Market, that project still clearly fell within the concept of mixed-use development. The application now under consideration, however, includes 6% commercial. While Ken Sudrath says the city has no rules to quantify a legitimate mix for mixed use, reason dictates that there's a point under which a token amount of a second use doesn't really qualify. Many people here tonight believing that 6% is insufficient to qualify as mixed, see this project as a residential development masquerading as mixed use in order to build on a mixed-use site. Page two shows the project site plan, color-coded by use. The data shows the project consists of 92% residential units, 6% retail and 2% other. While that 2% is identified in the table as 6,000 square foot of commercial, Ken Sudrath more accurately refers to it as 6,000 square feet of non-residential space for accessory uses to the apartment units. A leasing office plus a fitness center and a cyber cafe, which will both be closed to the public, not actually commercial. So 94% of the enclosed space is a residential complex with amenities. While that may technically constitute mixed, it is in reality a residential complex plus a token bit of retail. Page three, at the Planning and Zoning Meeting, there was confusion- At the planning and zoning meeting, there was confusion about how much retail the project would bring. Many people mistakenly believed that the large building on Atlanta Road has retail throughout the ground floor. Here are the applicant's renderings, color-coded by use. Pink represents the apartments while blue represents the retail. The building at right is building 200 on the site plan. Page four is a different view of the same intersection. The gated parking for the apartment tenants, seen here, strongly contradicts the idea of mixed use and discourages the interaction between tenants and the larger community. Page five shows building 300 along Atlanta Road. Less than half of its ground floor is retail. The majority of the ground floor and all of the second, third, and fourth floors are part of an apartment complex. Tenant amenities on the ground floor along Atlanta Road will be closed to the public, and the sign over the pedestrian passage reading "residential entry" discourages public entry there as well. Proponents of the project say it will look and feel a lot like retail, which makes me think that wax mannequins look a lot like people, but they don't offer much in the way of companionship. Page six shows the northernmost end of the building 300 with the real retail portion highlighted in blue. On page seven, the retail building, which appears to be two stories high, is really only a single story with high ceilings and not engineered to carry additional floors. Page eight. Smyrna has various parking requirements for various sorts of developments. In mixed use, fewer parking spaces are required per use because they'll be used at different times for different purposes. Mixed-use development depends on all available parking serving multiple purposes. But here, because 75% of the parking is gated for the exclusive use of the tenants, the whole formula for mixed-use parking goes out the window. While this plan provides 432 residential spaces, the fact that they're gated means they won't be shared. Without mixed use, Smyrna would require 1.75 spaces or 504 residential spaces here. The dark pink represents 414 gated spaces. The lighter pink represents 18 additional spaces to reach the 432. The light orange area represents the additional parking tenants might occupy if they park at the rate of 1.75 cars per unit, which is normally required. That would be 86% of all of the parking on the site. And while the retailers cannot use the tenant parking, the tenants are free to use retail spaces. When a tenant chooses to park closer to his door rather than inside the gate, he's essentially using two parking spaces, the one he's occupying and the one he's wasting inside the gate. Page nine. The applicant says that their retail space will likely house restaurants. Though restaurants are parking-intensive, the plan provides only 154 spaces for 24,500 square feet. Since the gated parking is off-limits, restaurant parking should not be calculated per mixed use. Without shared parking, Smyrna would require 326 spaces for that much restaurant space. Measured against parking requirements for standalone uses, the parking provided in this application falls short by 252 spaces, or 30%. It's not mixed use if the uses don't mix, and this project is not mixed use. With 94% of all of the enclosed space being residential apartment complex and 75% of all of the parking spaces being gated off for that use, this project is not suitable for this important commercial location in Smyrna's downtown core. I ask the council to please do the right thing for this city, deny this application. Thank you.
Normally, I'd say she took 25 seconds of your time, but she didn't. She did a good job getting out what she did.
She talks fast. My name is Jack Easter. I live on Roswell Street in Williams Park and express a concern we have as a neighborhood about the project in question. Section 1508 of Smyrna's zoning code details nine zoning review factors which are considered when evaluating a zoning request. Smyrna's community development staff has analyzed these nine factors in its review of the application now in consideration. I wanna share some thoughts on some of these review factors which have come out of discussion among my neighbors. Factor one, whether the zoning proposal will permit a use that is suitable in view of the use and development of adjacent nearby property. Comment: The use of the development nearby properties as outlined by the city's redevelopment plans depends on this property containing a mix of general, commercial, retail, and residential uses as per the mixed-use zoning. Given the 94% residential use, this project is both unsuitable for this site and an impediment to proper use and development of nearby properties. Factor two, whether the zoning proposal or the use proposed will adversely affect the existing use or usability of adjacent or nearby property. The proposed use will adversely affect the usability of nearby property by squelching the city's downtown redevelopment plans as stated in number one above. Factor number three, whether the property to be affected by the zoning proposal has a reasonable economic use as currently zoned. The property does have a good economic use as currently zoned for mixed use, but the application under consideration being 94% residential doesn't adequately meet the standards of mixed use. Factor five, whether the zoning proposal is in conformity with the policy and intent of the land use plan. The proposed project is not in conformity with the land use plan, which designates this area for mixed use. The 2007 mixed-use rezoning for this site was based on a project which was 3% office space, 27% retail, and 70% residential. The current project currently under consideration is 94% residential and a token 6% retail. Though there are two uses within the project, they are not well-balanced, being too heavily weighted on the residential side. Also, the residential parking being gated off negates the efficiency of shared parking, which is critical in mixed use and leaves the retail portion with insufficient parking. Factor six, whether there are other existing or changing conditions affecting the use and development of the property which give supporting grounds for either approval or disapproval of the zoning proposal. There absolutely are changing conditions which strongly support disapproval of this application. After making the decision in 89 to redevelop Smyrna's downtown based on a mixed-use plan, this mayor and council cemented the city's commitment with a new city hall, library, community center, police and fire stations, and the Market Village. The intended halo effect first manifesting itself in a small and medium-sized project eventually grew to encompass Johnquill Plaza and Belmont Hills. Then, in a significant example of bad timing, the recession descended on the entire country and work everywhere ground to a halt. Because the Johnquill site has remained an unattractive example of realized potential over the last several years, some who have grown anxious for progress are tempted to accept the proposal now under consideration. While the improving economy may well provide the necessary impetus before long to realize truly mixed-use development here, the Braves Entertainment Complex will certainly make that goal achievable sooner. The Braves' decision to relocate so close to Smyrna represents a pivotal changing condition which virtually dictates disapproval of this application. The application here, largely a gated residential apartment complex, flies in the face of the city's redevelopment plan. Had this project been proposed in 2007, the city would not have rezoned the site from its general commercial to accommodate this project. Now, with an improving economy and the Braves relocating nearby, there's no good reason to accept a distant second-choice project. Only by denying this application can Smyrna hope to realize the redevelopment set in motion in 89. Please do the right thing, deny the application. Thank you.
As the next speaker comes up, I just wanna, the only comment that I would maybe take each step to is that we're anxious. We've been, this is what we have to deal with tonight, but we didn't, I don't think we're jumping the gun. This has been going on, my gosh, for a long time, so. But anyway, thank you for your comments. Yes.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Jonathan Strobe. I live on Roswell Street in Williams Park neighborhood, and I wanna share my thoughts concerning the zoning of Johnquill Plaza and your approval of the proposed classification there for the multi-use, mixed-use development. Factor eight, piggyback on what Jack has spoken about, under any proposed zoning classification, whether the use proposed may create nuisance or incompatible with existing using in the area, the proposed use is incompatible with existing plans in our area. What the applicant proposes is largely a gated residential complex where the city's redevelopment plan calls for a mixture of general, commercial, retail, and residential. This being the largest assemblage in Smyrna's downtown core, the best candidate for a strong commercial mix is what we need there, not 94% residential. Residential building is strong all around this site. Builders want to build housing here, and people want to move in. The only problem is the city has regarding, the only problem the city has regarding residential development is resisting the temptation to allow builders to eat up our downtown with little else besides residential development. The challenge that we do face is acquiring the quality retail and general commercial that will complete the existence and the experience of living in the city of Smyrna. If this property is developed, as the applicant proposes, two things will happen. First, we will lose a very big opportunity for the type of quality commercial and retail at the city's core, which is essential to realizing Smyrna's redevelopment vision. The front door of our city will be an apartment complex with gates. Second, a precedent is set for more residential projects on nearby commercial properties. Factor nine, when considering these proposals, whether due to size of the proposed use and either land or building height, the proposed use would affect the adjoining property, general neighborhood, and other uses in the area positively or negatively. This project would negatively affect the general neighborhood because of the, underutilizes a prime piece of mixed-use property as a gated residential development. This project represents the impediment to the true mixed-use downtown development plan that is key to completing Smyrna's strong sense in our sitting. Please do the right thing and deny this development. On a further note, I would like to say that it's been proposed that $60,000 to $120,000 Gen Y residents would be moving into this development. As a Gen Y myself, I will go ahead and tell you that if I'm making $60,000 to $120,000 a year as a single individual, or me and my wife, I'm not gonna move to Smyrna, Georgia. My wife and I chose to move to Smyrna, Georgia because we wanted a nice-sized house with a community and a downtown environment, but we didn't wanna pay that much money for 1,400 square feet and the perimeter. We chose to move outside the city, outside the perimeter, where we could get a bigger home, and we could have easy access to the city if we wanted it, but we wanted the town feel that Smyrna offers. I won't even touch on the Braves' development because that's been overstated. You have $640 million going 2.4 miles down the road, and we're gonna jump the gun and go to the first thing that's thrown at us, given that the market's turned around. I know this isn't the first thing in the whole proposal of Johnquill Plaza, but it is the first thing since the market's turned around. And on a third note, pendant lighting and undermount sinks aren't gonna bring residents. Thank you.
Hello, my name's Robert Harrison, 2889 Alexander Street in Williams Park. I get the dubious distinction of being, I believe, the closest residential property owner to this development, so it affects me a great deal. In fact, the view from my front door is gonna be the backside of the apartment building. As I was sitting here tonight, I was listening to the representative describe the amenities and the pool, the cabana area, lounge chairs in the water, and I was thinking, wow, that sounds like a really cool place to hang out. And then I remembered, I can't. There's a gate. I'm not allowed in. Wouldn't be the first time.
Blimey, go by.
Exactly, yeah. Exactly, yeah. I can wait for the train, but it's not the first place I'm not allowed in. But in the sense of this development here, the gate brings me to my point. Several times tonight and the other night at the zoning meeting, the representatives referred to this development as following the guidelines for the new urbanism movement. And if you've studied urban planning more than five minutes, and that qualifies me, you know that the terms "new urbanism" and "gated community" should never, ever be described in the same development. They are the complete polar opposites of each other. New urbanism was a philosophy that is meant to foster a sense of community with walkable streets, public meeting spaces, public gathering places. It's meant to design and foster community spirit. A gated community does a great job of fostering us versus them. It divides the community. It does not bring people together. It separates us. In fact, the main focus of that development looks like a fortress. It's built like a castle with a gate. That does nothing to bring people from other places to want to come hang out there. That is, the people that live in that apartment building, that's their space. It's not a community space. And I just urge you to reconsider. If you've thought about voting for this development, it's been said many times, yes, we've got better things on the horizon. It's not just that. This is a poor development, poorly designed development. I believe the attorney referred to the existing lot right now as an eyesore. And yes, we've been looking at that eyesore, if you wanna call it that, for six, almost seven years. But I think I speak for a lot of people when I say that I'm perfectly okay looking at a poorly maintained, overgrown eyesore for another six to eight months, something better is gonna come along. The economy's improving, things are happening for Smyrna, we don't need to settle for this. And as a quick side note, I want to let the mayor know that I think that's the closest I've ever come to getting married, when I got sworn and said I do. So just for the record. Thank you.
I wanna start by saying I'm probably the first proponent of the development, so I might take a little longer than others. Corey Williams, 1903 Haven Park Circle, one of the newer developments in Smyrna. And as you can tell from the accent, I'm not from here. I'm actually from Dallas-Fort Worth, Gen Y, and moved to Atlanta.
Any baby boomers left out there anywhere?
Moved to Atlanta 2007 and actually picked West Village because, which is where I moved first, because it was close to our office. And I think we can all agree that West Village is a mixed-use development, correct? I mean, everyone feels that way. That build-out is now 700 units with multifamily condos, single-family homes and townhomes with about 60,000 square feet of retail, so pretty good development there. And I liked it so much that we decided to build a house here and start a family here with my wife, and we're very vested in the future of Smyrna. And I just feel like Class A apartment development is, with mixed use, is the future for kind of outlying metropolitan cities. I know most people don't like that. I'll also say that it seems like most of the opponents tend to be from one neighborhood, and I appreciate that, but Smyrna is a much larger city than Williamsport.
You're a pretty big fellow, too.
Hey, if that works for any of you guys, perfect. And I've also heard a lot about the Braves stadium coming, and I'm very proud that Cobb County is getting the Braves stadium. The Braves are here 81 days a year. We have to have development and retail development that can be supported 365 days a year, not just through, you know, the Braves' development. So just real quick, that's all I had to say, but I am the Gen Y, 33 years old, from out of town, did choose to live in an apartment in Smyrna, liked it so much, we chose to build a house in Smyrna and start a life here, so we do exist. Thank you.
My notes are on here. All right, I'm in favor of this development.
Name and address?
Oh, sorry. Brian Bover. I'm located in a development off Camp Highland called Woodland Brook. We're a relatively new development in Smyrna. I'm in favor of this development, and I'm the same age as the previous speaker. I came to this area, living in bindings in an apartment, and with my, you know, we were a couple, and we moved into a house in Smyrna. And I'm also, you know, people say that, you know, people over 100,000 don't live in Smyrna, right? I have over, I'm not gonna go into my income, but I live in Smyrna and like it here. I wanted to remind the council that more people will speak up against than will speak up for. The people for will tend to be quiet. They probably didn't even come in the meeting in most cases. And the people speaking up against are near the development and, you know, have nostalgia for what was gonna go in 2007, but things change because of the economy. I work in multiple civic orgs outside of my, you know, my job, just 'cause I like to volunteer, and most of the people I talk to are in favor of the development. For traffic and walkability, the plan isn't much, is much better actually than the 2007 plan because it's gonna bring less cars into the area. There's been complaints about gates. It's a pretty organized buzzword, it seems, from various people coming through. And there's many residential units that are gonna be in the area that's open to public, yes, and some will be behind the gate. This isn't much different than some of the other mixed-use developments. Ivy Walk has a gated area. Although West Village doesn't have a gated area, it has a parking garage with a gate on it. There's significantly more parking per 10,000 square feet of retail than any of those two developments. So Branch has learned from past experience and has made sure there's more parking for the retail. Our last rezoning request, we wanted to build, you know, this isn't the first rezoning request for this parcel. We asked, can the buildings be moved to the street and create a more urban character? They delivered that. And, you know, I'm happy about that. The shops wraparound on the main entrance on Atlanta Road that comes off of the street coming from the downtown area, I don't know the name of the street, there's shops that wraparound, there's, on both entrances on Atlanta Road, there's two buildings that are dedicated to retail, so there's, people are going to be pulled into the site. It's gonna attract attention for the city. I agree with Branch that this will be a catalyst. There's too much retail currently in Smyrna. The problem is that a lot of the retail's vacant or poor use. We need more high-density, high-value development in the city to encourage We need more high-density, high-value development in the city to encourage better retail development. And, you know, if you want to see a lot of retail, go down South Cobb Drive from one end of Smyrna to the other. Not a lot of it's used very well. By avoiding the flood of more retail, this development's actually going to help downtown rather than hurt. And I have to ask, what's wrong with boutiques and restaurants? Why do we need some big box grocery store, you know, that's not even going to come here, some other big box development to anchor the site? If Branch can make it work with boutiques and restaurants, what's wrong with that? This is, there's nothing like this in Cobb County, save a few newer developments. Most of the developments around us, even in bindings, are older developments. We can't look at past experiences and compare it to this and, you know, with the, I mean, Post Springs, for instance, is the most comparable property that I can think of, and it doesn't even have granite countertops on it, so. New urbanism is the future for America. It's where the trend is growing. People are moving back from the suburbs into the city, and I think this helps that trend. With all the effort that Branch went into this, with a one-year wait, if it's voted down, are we going to have another opportunity like this? Are we passing up something big? I think the council should make their decision in closing. I think the council should make their decision based on facts and not fear residents of the past. Show that Smyrna is evolving, that we're turning into a more urban character, that the patterned development that's worked in perimeter Buckhead and Midtown will work here. Please approve the application. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, ladies and gentlemen of the council, I appreciate the opportunity to address you tonight. My name is David Veronicar. I live at 3241 Collier Gate Court Southeast. That's in the Collier Gate neighborhood. We're within easily about a mile and a half walking distance of the proposed development area. We've heard a lot of good arguments, good rational arguments, I think, against the proposal tonight. I'd like to make a blatantly emotional one. Because ultimately, in my experience and based on a lot of research recently, people ultimately make decisions based on emotion and they justify them rationally. I'm not going to repeat the rational arguments that you've heard tonight because you've heard plenty of them. I will tell you that as a Cobb County resident of 27 years and as a Smyrna resident of 10 years, I am proud to live in this city. I am proud of the direction that you have taken for the city of Smyrna, and I believe simply that this project is unworthy of the city of Smyrna and inconsistent with the vision that the city council has established. I want to say I respect the work of the council, the members of the council, the city planning commission or committee. I respect the work of the developers. I respect that there's a tremendous amount of effort that's gone into this, and I can see from the developer's point of view that this must be extremely frustrating to hear this much community opposition at this stage with as much as they've invested in it. I empathize with that. I believe that they've done thorough work in trying to attract retailers. I accept that at face value. I believe that the bonus that we think we may get from the Braves moving into the area may or may not materialize. I don't believe in the tooth fairy. Yes, I want more retail, I want more commercial development, but I don't believe it will necessarily happen. I strongly agree with the gentleman who said earlier, I would much rather look at a vacant lot for another seven years to wait for the right development opportunity than to look at an ugly apartment complex 30 years from now when I'm looking for a nice area to walk one summer evening. Ladies and gentlemen, I urge you to vote against this proposal. Thank you very much.
Hi, my name's Haley McQuade. I live at 1555 Roswell Street in Williams Park, and I am a proud resident of Williams Park. My husband actually was not able to come tonight, so he's asked me to read his thoughts.
You don't get 10 minutes, though?
No, and actually it's good because I scaled it down. I edited his version, so. Dear Mayor Bacon and fellow city council members, my name is Stephen McQuade, and I live at 1555 Roswell Street. I do have concerns with the current proposal before you. Is this the type of project that we have envisioned for the gateway into our downtown? Let's be honest about this. It is an apartment complex. Yes, it's being touted as Class A, but it's still an apartment complex. In doing some research by just looking at the apartment complexes down Atlanta Road, Cumberland Boulevard, Spring Hill Parkway, Village Parkway, there are over 5,000 apartments. This is not including the 300 Class A apartments that are being built down from our house on Roswell Street and potentially the Class A apartments that will be built at Belmont Plaza, plus the ones that have gone up at Cumberland Boulevard and Cobb Parkway intersection. Homes are selling very quickly in our neighborhoods in the city. There are just not enough homes for sale. Look at the upper-scale townhomes, the ones most recently on Fleming. Most of these units were under contract even before the construction was completed. The project across from Campbell Middle has resumed and seems to be being built out. And lastly, the project, it's outside the city limits, but it's on the corner of Atlanta Road and Cooper Lake, has been completed. Yes, we want young professionals or the Generation Y, as they've been called. My husband and I were those people when we moved to Smyrna. We want people to be, we want, that was what, eight years ago? We want people to become a part of that community, and I'm a Generation X, to be invested in our community. When we looked here, we stumbled across downtown Smyrna and the Market Village, and what jumped out to me was the small-town feel, yet vibrant shops and restaurants and all the fun festivals. We moved to Williams Park in 2005. There were less than five kids under the age of 12. Now there are over 200. Our neighborhood association has grown enormously, and we have tried really hard to build a sense of community within Williams Park as well as the city of Smyrna. If we want housing as a part of this development, these are the types of people we want. People who will be involved in our community, our businesses, and our schools. I've been in numerous meetings over the years with the developers wanting to do business in our neighborhood. The developers tell us that this is the only type of project that will work, and this is all the market will support. We've sat in meetings about Whitfield Park, which is under development across the street from our house. We begged and pleaded with them to remove a few of the 760 lotline homes to give us some small green space that had been approved before the economic downturn. We were told that the market would only support $275,000 homes. We were told that it would take three years to build out. So let me give you an update. They started with 11 homes, eight are under contract. The first two that went under contract were the largest ones at 340,000. They are starting on another four houses. The agent told me that they would be built out in a year. Branch will tell you that they drew a two-mile ring around Johnquil, and there's too much vacant retail and not enough rooftops to support more development. I don't think you can accurately get a sense of potential customers or potential retail for us to go by doing that. Where do most people that live in downtown go to shop or eat if it's not a Market Village? We go down Atlanta Road towards bindings. The harsh reality is I'm not going to go up two miles towards Austell Road to shop. There's a reason that Branch, as well as the Providence Group, who's building Whitfield Park, wanted to do business in Smyrna. They know that they can make money. Architecturally speaking, this project is not unique. Mixed-use developments are nothing new. I know we've never had a true Main Street, but why not strive for the look of something? Look at the architecture in downtown Woodstock, Vicry, and Cummings. Branch is committed to doing this project and willing to work on design or architecture. Maybe think about making an exception or stipulation to the one-year rule before they could resubmit a plan. I have 33 seconds. In an email to her constituents dated 2/18/2012, Councilwoman Nullawitz updated us on Branch pulling their plans and resubmitting new plans at a later date. She went on to say, Johnquil Village is much more than a gateway site for the city of Smyrna. City staff and I agree, what happens here will likely set a standard for future major projects in the city. I wholeheartedly agree. What gets approved here will set the precedent for the future developments. We, as a city, have one chance to get this right. Thank you for your time and your service to the city of Smyrna.
I'm going to verify those numbers on all them kids that y'all are having out there, though. That's a lot of kids.
Hi, I'm Sonia Henderson-Engel. I live at 2642 Highland Avenue in Williams Park. I wanted to share with mayor and council some comments that were made by visiting family over Thanksgiving. First of all, I, as well as my family and the family that was visiting, are very proud of Village Green and the development, the use of that space. But during the course of conversation over Thanksgiving, my daughter asked, you know, well, what's going on with Johnquil Plaza? Are you going to get your Publix? So, you know, I said, no, apparently not. You know, they don't think it's economically feasible to serve this community. So instead, we have a developer wanting to put in a bunch of apartments. So at that point, you know, my daughter said, you know, we saw this huge development at 285 and Atlanta Road on the way to your house. And I looked at her and I said, yeah, I'm afraid it's the same developer. And she just said, you know, she didn't think that would fit Smyrna at all. She lived most of her life in Smyrna, as have I. So I guess what I'm trying to get at is, I don't want my city to be represented by what I would call overdeveloped density, and we're hearing that word a lot tonight. So I would urge mayor and council, please vote no on this appeal.
My name is Jean Martin, and I live at 3435 Lee Street. I moved to Smyrna in 1965, and I'm part of the baby boomer generation, and now I'm part of the senior generation. So just a few things that, as I sat here and listened to comments tonight, Mr. Mayor, you used to always encourage the citizens to support the local businesses. We don't have them to support anymore, just as the gentleman said, in a radius of being 9,000 people from the Johnquil area. Those people would support more retail if we had it. Another thing, the gentleman painted a pretty picture of what's going to go into these apartments, all the frou-frou that's going to be in there and everything, but there's still going to be an apartment. They're going to be cracker boxes, the way I look at it, because of 900 square feet, that's not very much. The other thing was the economic impact that's going to have on the area. Well, it's going to impact who? BP, Quick Trip, Race Track, because that's the only thing they're going to be able to shop at. And the other thing, the downzoning, that's right, it's a downzoning because we're going downhill, we're regressing, we're not going, we're not looking to go upward. It's going to be, we got rid of one bad thing, why create another one? Another thing that, I don't know how the other people have felt, but I think the attorneys and the developers have really insulted the people of Smyrna by saying, this is all you're worthy of. And I encourage you, please vote against this. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Sean Murphy, 982 McLendon Avenue in Smyrna Heights. I'm swimming upstream again. In forming your decisions tonight, I believe it's important to recognize the previous plans that have been undertaken by others to guide you in making this very important decision. Beginning with the Livable Centers Initiative Plan for downtown Smyrna, the consultants determined that when developed, the Johnquil Plaza area should be composed of the following elements, and these are excerpts from that plan. A mixed-use development that fronts Atlanta Road with parking in the rear and pedestrian connections to the nearby neighborhoods, this plan does that. Potential for multi-story housing with parking decks and surface parking, this plan has that. It doesn't have the parking deck, but it does have surface parking. Residents as over-street-level retail and full-service restaurants, this plan does that. And a park providing a gateway entry to the city center, this plan also does that. In addition to the LCI, the 2030 Comprehensive Plan states, a key redevelopment area is the Johnquil Plaza Shopping Center. This center should be redeveloped as a mixed-use area. This area should contain higher-density housing supportive of Main Street retail. In short, the city's two most comprehensive planning documents both fully engage the community for input, by the way, that's multiple meetings and interviews with the public as well as specialists. They both also fully support the key tenants of the current plan. It's also worth noting that neither of these plans suggest anything other than mixed use for this area. This means the plans do not support Johnquil becoming all-retail or big-box retail, and they don't support anything other than mixed use. To be viable, the planning experts believe that this site must be a mixture of uses with a strong base in residential housing.
And besides those points, I just want to say, as a resident of Smyrna for a long time now, the reason I moved to Smyrna was because we don't have a bunch of retail. We do not have a Beaufort Highway. And the last thing I would want to see this site become is a large shopping center with another big box, 100 square feet of retail that was previously approved. It just would have been a huge amount of traffic and not what we would have wanted in our downtown. So I think that this proposal that's in front of you, while it does have some things that maybe not all of us would like, I think we're hung up on the term apartments. The truth is, I live in a neighborhood that's all single-family homes, but guess what the percentage of renters is in my neighborhood? By most estimates, it's over 60%, and that's in single-family homes. If you go down the street on Spring Road to some of these condominium developments that are all condos, that even have rules saying they can't be rented, with what happened in 2007, those rules were thrown out the window. And many of these condominium complexes that used to be 10% rentals are now 50 and 60% rentals. There is no guarantee that if you put in townhomes or condos that they would not become rentals. So you have to ask yourself, not whether it's going to be renters, but what is the quality of the architecture? Village-style apartments that were built in the 1970s and 80s are a thing of the past. The many buildings, the multiple facades, the huge amount of green space that had to be maintained and secured, that's untenable today. A modern urban apartment development has a few sides and a courtyard. It's much easier to maintain, it's much less expensive to maintain. They last longer, they hold their values. They're not comparable. We're not talking about the same renters here at all. They're not the same. We're talking about high-quality people coming here. We do not have any Class A apartments in this area. I used to work for Post Properties. I know the model, I know who they go after, and I know what this company will go after. And I believe they will bring the kind of residents that Smyrna wants and the people that will become permanent, longtime buyers of our homes. So for that reason, I would encourage you to support this, but I would ask that you add one additional stipulation, or two stipulations, I'm sorry. One would be to require all of the storefrontage on the first floor of all the buildings to be for-lease retail. That means if they have some of those spaces being used as fitness centers or things like that that aren't public, that they should be for-lease retail. And the second stipulation I would ask that you add is a requirement that they not have the traditional gated apartment complex trash in a compactor where people put the bag on their hood and drive it because it ends up dropped in the middle of Concord Road or Atlanta Road. I would rather you see them require in stipulation some kind of trash concierge service for it. That'll make it a true Class A. With that, I thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and Council. I really didn't intend to speak tonight. I had told some people I just didn't think...
Mike, we just, for the record, tell us who you are.
I'm sorry, Mike Terry, I live in Forest Hills. So there are other people here other than Williams Park.
You're Pat Tears, brother.
Yeah, Pat.
That's a joke.
He wandered in a few minutes ago, but I appreciate the opportunity to speak. I had sent each of you an email, a lengthy email. I don't know if you all had time to read it. I know you've been inundated with lots of emails, I know you have. But I know that some of you read it. It's a lengthy email that made six or seven points that I think are still valid even though I wrote it a couple of weeks ago. I know some of you read it because you responded back and made comments on it. And I don't intend to rehash those comments tonight, but what I thought I'd do, which I think you'll appreciate, I hope you will, I have been privileged to be copied on emails from people all over the city, not just Williams Park, but people from Bennett Woods, people from west of here, people in every single ward that you represent. And I read those and I selected a sentence or two from six or seven of these that I think really reflect what our citizens are trying really hard to tell you. And I want to read a few to you. Again, these were emails to you. Please stop trying to transform Smyrna into something that we are not and we don't want to be. We currently have a strong sense of community, and this plan will not help it one bit. That's an email that some of you received. A second person wrote, this so-called new identity will have a long-term, long-term impact on Smyrna, and I don't think it'll be good. A third person said, nothing says low-market, and I remember this guy, he lives literally right over there. Nothing says low-market and low-property values like a large apartment complex... low property values like a large apartment complex right in the middle of our downtown area." A fourth person said, "This plan represents a step in the wrong direction, backwards. Whatever goes here will have an enormous impact on Smyrna for decades, and we deserve better." And finally, I got an email from a lady, a neighbor of mine in Forest Hills, asking a question. And I really didn't think I was qualified to answer this. And I told her to send it to you guys. I don't think that she did, so I want to read it here tonight. She said, "Mike," this is really important, she said, "Mike, is it the primary job of our council members to be my voice or to be my decision-maker? Isn't it their obligation to act legally but vote as their constituency leads them?" Think about that. And two more short ones. Another one wrote, "Please respect those that elected you, who are telling you loudly and clearly, we don't think this plan is right for Smyrna." And my last email, "This plan represents a change in focus and a change in heart, and it is regressive in nature. I think it will erode the progress we have already made. I urge you to vote against it." Thank you.
Mr. Mayor and Council, thank you for your time. Casey Rutherford, 1383 Marshston Street. I just wanted to give a few words. My husband and I have been residents of Smyrna for just over two months now, and I want to give you a little bit of background on where we came from. It was a multi-use apartment complex, much like is being discussed here. About two years ago when we married, we were drawn to the granite countertops, we were drawn to the high ceilings. We thought that those were big glamorous things to have as newlyweds and young professionals. But I want to tell you about the neighbors that I had, and the marijuana that I could smell from underneath the doors of the apartment complex with the granite countertops, that I was paying $1,400 a month to live in. I want to tell you about the neighbors, the urine that I could smell in the parking decks in these places. Yes, it costs that much to live there, but they're packing multiple people in these apartments. They're not allowed to do that, but they live there. They pack six, seven, eight people in one apartment complex. They don't care about the area, they don't care about Smyrna, they don't care about the future of this community. And I just want to urge you all to not allow those neighbors that I just left to come to this beautiful new neighborhood that we've just joined. Thank you.
Good evening. Bob Preston, 5515 Red Barkway, Delmoody. I'm an architect with the Preston Partnership. I guess as an architect, I live to see projects built. I mean, I'm passionate about design, but I really want to touch and feel and inhabit those projects. I don't want them to sit on a shelf in perpetuity. My firm had about 86 similar projects to this that died in the recession in '08 and '09. It was about 27,000 units. It was almost 7 million square feet of retail. Many of them had begun construction, just like this one. They lost their financing, and they have been left very much ablit on the landscape. It's very difficult these days to bring those projects back to life, but there are occasions when some of my clients are bold enough, are courageous enough, and are committed enough to try and make it happen. There are very few of them out there, but I would tell you that Branch Properties is one of them. In this, what has become a very difficult economic environment, I think we all should be very proud of them for stepping up to the plate and working so hard as they have done to try and make this a reality. It is a rare occasion, I know, and I believe we should collectively embrace it. You've heard some opposition, and there will always be opposition on these kinds of projects, but this is a golden opportunity to move this project forward. I've worked with Branch for a very long time, and I am confident that this project will be a project this city will be proud of if you vote for it. Thank you.
As we're waiting on our next speaker to come up, I just want to just take just a second. I've been in office probably too long. It wasn't a plan. You're just sort of just in the blink of an eye, you're just here. We've had studies done, and you know, the studies have said, you know, you need to, in order to support retail, you got to get more rooftops. So what do you put down here? Do you put condos that are not going to sell? Are you going to put apartments that nobody wants? You know, what do you do? And I think that's what we're sort of struggling with. But I'll say this about Branch Properties. If I had to deal with the company, we're fortunate to have Branch here. We have been working with them for, my gosh, I don't know how long, trying to figure out what's best for our community. And it's not been, it's not been an easy travel. It's been tough. And for those that think we've just all of a sudden decided we're going to try to get this through, you know, you're just sadly mistaken. We have worked with these folks, gosh, I don't know how long. I mean, I'm so sick of seeing garbage slams down here, but if it wasn't for garbage slams and Branch, you know, for us to at least try to come to some kind of common ground, you know, my gosh, I don't, and I don't know that I have all the answers, but I just, I know this is an emotional trip for everybody. It's our community. I mean, I was born 65 years ago, right down here behind City Hall. That's a long time. And I'm going to tell you, if folks would have said Smyrna would be what it is today, they'd say, "You're crazy." And, but anyway, it's the best community I think any of us can live in, whether we prove it, disprove it, or whatever happened. But we've got good folks. You're not going to let Ron speak tonight?
Yep.
Good.
My name is Liz Davis. I live at 1351 Roswell Street in Williams Park. Yes, we are a very proactive community. We love our city, we love our neighbors, and we love our community. I respectfully request that you deny this project. Why should this body present to the occupants of 288 gated apartments with approximately 500 gated parking spots the gateway to our city? What does this leave the other 52,650 residents of Smyrna to enjoy and be proud of? I feel that the approval of this project will forever condemn my city to a bedroom community to Atlanta and Marietta and the vibrant and welcoming community it can be. You can do better, and we, the citizens of Smyrna, deserve better. Please vote no on this proposal.
Anyone else that was sworn in?
Okay.
Buddy else going to speak?
Were you sworn in?
Yes, sir.
Okay, come right on up, Al.
I'm familiar with the seat.
This is Al Graves.
My name is Al Graves. I reside at 1079 Pinehurst Drive Southeast, which all of you know. And I will probably repeat some of the remarks I did to the zoning board, but let me start off with this. If, and to call to your attention, we have recently in Smyrna had a moratorium on apartments instituted by this chamber or their predecessors. That must have had some justification. So now, we have suddenly decided that in order to put some project on a piece of open ground that has created many anxious moments for many people since 2007 or '08, if I don't care what type apartment you build, if you use similar type management to own the apartment, you can build something that looks like the Taj Mahal if things do not work out well. And I'm sure Branch, I'm not casting any aspersions on the architecture, the management, or anything else. I'm saying that if circumstances denigrate to the point where they decide to sell it and go on to different opportunities and another company buys it, this $900, $1,200 rent can cut down to five and six, and consequently your tenants do. And we're right back in the dilemma that Smyrna's been in. And if you all remember, we've recently went through and spent several million dollars buying apartment complexes that started out with high expectations and denigrated into having to be purchased by the city of Smyrna. And I certainly don't want that to be the result of this. So if, when this upscale movement downtown Smyrna started, all we heard was Belmont and Johnquill are going to be restored and upgraded through the TAD, which fell through, and anyway, and then the recession hit, which was nobody's fault here, but anyway it happened. Well, it's languished back and forth and back and forth. And I hope y'all haven't given up making some sort of effort to make this, I believe we said gateway, we upscaled Atlanta Road, we got all this beautiful lighting and so forth. And I just do not feel like that regardless of the merits of the apartment, what it has to offer, if you want to bring in two or 300 transient residents in that area, that's going to confine their presence to that area and, or go to Buckhead or the Square in Marietta, they're not going to contribute anything, in my opinion, to the civic upgrading of this city. And they are certainly not going to contribute anything to the commercial opportunities for the city of Smyrna that have got to the point where it's to the disgraceful stage. There's no significant commercial opportunities here. And if that is what you want to create, I would suggest a yes vote. If you want to represent the very best interest of the citizens of Smyrna who elected each one of you and put you here, you're going to vote no, regardless of zoning and whatever taste this might be. And with that, thank you for your time.
One else that was sworn in? If not, we'll conclude this portion of the public hearing.
I wanted to thank everyone in the audience who spoke, everyone who took the time to come here. Oh, is one more person coming up to speak?
I wasn't sworn in, I wasn't here.
Well, let's see. Where were you, Bruce?
I was getting off the plane. But when I turned on the TV, Ken was talking.
So you don't know what we've been talking about?
No, sir.
Man, I hate to give you one minute, but Bruce Scott Swearman, I mean-
I do. I do.
Did your plane land on Atlanta Road?
Back when it was two lanes. Bruce Holmeler, I'm resident at 3372 Pretty Branch Drive. I've owned my home for 20 years with my wife. We've lived in Smyrna for 24 years. As I mentioned, I turned on the TV, I saw the presentations of Ken and Jarvis, was it Garvis? Jesse and Jack, and I thought I needed to come up here and talk a little bit. Just to let you know, I was at the PNZ meeting where they denied this proposal 7-0. I was very proud of the way my neighbors spoke that night. I'm just going to go through, Ken had 15 points on his summary list, I'm just going to go through eight or 10 of them, top to bottom. First one was the Braves announcement. I really think we're just moving too fast, and we need to relook at everything. Everything did change on November 11th. That announcement that night by that person, the gentleman stated that the land might have even doubled in value that day. Grocery store needed, more commercial needed. I know that Jesse had a list of several different grocery stores. There's a rumor going around in the community about that, the beta small grocery that Walmart does. I don't know if you all talk to them or not, but there's some of that talk going on in the community. Gateway to the city. I'll tell you, I saw a presentation, Ron gave a presentation that I sat in about River View. We look in the crystal ball here, and the gateway to the city, my folks, I tend to believe, you know, downtown Smyrna in 10, 15 years may have waterfront. Traffic concern. Traffic concern. Corky is my city council person. I've mentioned this before. Leave a meeting at the American Legion every Friday, 8:00 AM. I live on Pretty Branch. I come down Dunn, I go down Collier. I can't believe 8 o'clock on a Friday. It is backed up there. It's backed up because Atlanta Road and Collier Road, where that light is, which is one block from where the proposed site is, and with that school there. I come down to Pretty Branch, I can see red lights coming up past Pine Tree to the top of the hill. I never believed it could happen. It was just a surprise to me. You know, I work out on my home, so I don't get out at about much at 8 or 5 o'clock, but my office is in Norcross. When I do go to Norcross, I go down 75, up 85. But it does take between 20 and 30 minutes to get to 75, and I can get to Norcross in about an hour and 15 minutes. Apartments. The PNZ person, I forget, it was a female sitting on the side, was talking about the one-bedroom condos and the price point to change these from apartments to condos. And, you know, she was saying something in the effect of, you know, "Why would anybody want to buy a one-bedroom condo? You know, you'd do something like that at the beach or at the waterfront, you know, down on Chattahoochee River." And nobody's talked about the possibility of the increase of crime. Have we looked at the stats for West Village and Ivy Walk and different places around the city compared to the apartments that's proposed? Transient renters. I might have missed some of this driving up here. There was a Campbell High School teacher that spoke that night at the PNC Board, and she caught everybody's attention. And she was like, "Look, folks, you don't know the impact of the transient students at Campbell High School." I didn't know, and I'm very involved over there in the high school. Sense of place. Rush hour. I sat at the red light in between CVS and BP, and I just imagined myself as somebody that lived in one of these new apartments. That apartment's going to be right on the road, okay? 4:30, 5 o'clock. I work out of my house. I can't stand it when the guy across the street uses his blower and I'm on a conference call. So sitting there, police, fire engines, I mean, all types of, all types of noise for these salespeople that are going to be working out of their homes and running these properties. Property values. Talking about upgrades in 10 years. Is there any commitment out of Branch about recommitting in 10 years to upgrade these apartments? And then number 15, which I think number one was important, number 15 is the most important. Just too many unknowns. This corner not being purchased by Branch, not owned by Branch. I just don't understand it. I would ask that you deny approval. And, oh, one other comment Jarvis made.
Garvis.
Garvis.
He's very sensitive about his name.
Sorry about that. He had mentioned he has a good relationship with the folks at the Florida Company, the Florida Bank. He's negotiating with them. What I like to say to Branch Properties, just go ahead and walk the talk. Come back when you own the corner of Spring Street and Atlanta Road. And when we know more about the Braves Entertainment District. Thank you.
Mayor, may I have a couple of minutes for rebuttal?
Yeah, just two minutes, because I should have not even let the last, I mean, no, I'm just saying that.
Well, I-
No, what? Don't let him speak? Okay, he's going to speak. I gave Bruce six minutes.
I'll be brief. This is an important project to us, too. I mean, you know, we have families and children we have to support, so I'd like my opportunity as well. Okay, we sat through the rebuttal from you, and I would, I'd like the opportunity, because I think there were some points made that I'd like to respond to that are important, and I'll keep it brief.
It's a two-minute warning.
Okay. Listen, I think if you asked everyone in the room what appropriate development is for this site, you'd get 100 different answers. The reality is, we're debating the merits of whether or not apartments should be here or not. The site is zoned. This is not a rezoning. This is a site plan amendment and an elevation amendment to an- This is a site plan amendment and an elevation amendment to an existing zoning. I want to make that clear. I've heard 40 people get up here, it's felt like, I think it was less, but it felt like that, talk about how they don't want apartments here. They were zoned in 2007. We're not here reinventing the wheel. We are reducing the retail density. That is a valid argument, I acknowledge that. Please, let me finish. That's a valid argument that we're reducing retail density, but we believe for just cause, and we've brought data to support that. In regard to the gates, there is not a mixed-use development in the country that does not segregate the residential parking from the retail parking. All of the common areas of our development are open to anyone that wants to come in there. That's equivalent of me going to someone in Williams Park saying, "Can I come in your community and park in your garage?" I don't think that opportunity is afforded to me. We do separate the residential parking from the retail parking, but all of the common areas, all of the sidewalks, are open to anybody that would like to come through this development, drive through this development. You can drive from one end through the other, but yes, we do separate the parking fields. In regard to the parking ratios, that was completely factually inaccurate. We are overparked. We are at seven and a half spaces per thousand rentable square feet of retail, and that's before any shared parking. We have not shown one fence on that plan. How they're coming up with these ratios baffles me, I don't understand it. But I want to state for, you know, for the record, that we are overparked on the retail. And the reason we're overparked is because you have to be to make it successful. If you look at Smyrna Market Village, I just want to be very candid here. If you look at Smyrna Market Village, the second generation of tenants that come in here are pseudo-service tenants, office tenants. Charter communications is not a traditional retail use. Let's be honest with ourselves. If you want the vibrancy in Smyrna Market Village, which is only about 40,000 square feet of retail, I might add, you need to add density down here. I've heard numerous arguments tonight that we don't want the traffic, we don't want the traffic, but we don't want the density. And from a land planning perspective, those are in complete juxtaposition with one another. The way to eliminate traffic, believe it or not, over time, is to get to scalable density where you create a pedestrian-friendly environment. There are numerous examples of that throughout this country that I could illustrate. And then finally, I'm going to keep as brief as I can, Mayor, I promise, I'm going as fast as I can. And finally, in regard to the Braves Stadium, look, there are 81 home games a year, okay? That's roughly 22% of the year that there is a game being played there. That's four out of five days a year, there's no one in the park. That is not going to be the driver that you all hope and think it's going to be. Sure, the entertainment in and around the stadium during game day is going to be vibrant, but that's within walking distance. There is a massive project planned on the site. I want to be realistic here. Look, I played collegiate baseball, I got drafted to play professional baseball out of high school, I know a little bit about baseball, believe it or not, and I'm telling you right now, it's an entertainment, destination-oriented development that at select times is vibrant and other times is desolate. That is not going to be the driver this community thinks it's going to be. On that, I hope I caught everything on that point. And finally, for the record, I want to state, the average household income of a renter in West Village is $106,813. We threw out estimates of what we thought this project would be, given the proximity of that project, okay? For the record, and we can give anybody that wants to see that the data afterwards outside. I'll end on that, thank you.
I want to end on this note, and before I turn it over back to Terry, to just tell everybody this, that what we're faced with tonight is what we have in front of us. It's not what might be in six months or 10 years or... Today is what we're looking at, so, you know. It's not what if or what's going to happen when the Braves, you know, I don't know what they're doing out there. I know they're building something that's going to support the Braves and that stadium, and it's going to be more than just 81 a game, so. Larry, did you get sworn in?
I did. I just want, I'll be brief here.
All right, well, no, if you're going to speak, you need to, and I swear, this is going to be the last one.
This will be quick. Let me just clear something.
Well, hold on, no, no, hold on, Scott, we need to...
I was sworn in.
Okay, all right.
All right, look, in 2007, this zoning was not for apartments, this was for condos. So this is not just an amendment, it was also 30% retail. It had an anchor, there was a lot of difference here. And let me just say this, this is not just a zoning issue, this is a planning issue. This is going to dictate what we are for the next 40, 50 years. What we need is a destination. An apartment complex is not a destination. And if you don't think we can support it, look at what happens when we have the food trucks, when we have these great concerts on the green, and when we have the Taste of Smyrna, hundreds of people come down here. We need a destination, and I think you guys need to show some creative leadership and deny this.
You know what, I almost resent that, Larry. I mean, you're acting like, I mean... I appreciate your comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, for coming. Thank you, everyone who spoke. Thank you, everyone who listened respectfully. There are a lot of opinions in this room, and I'm glad that everyone who wanted to share their opinions had an opportunity to do so. I had a couple of questions that came to me during the presentation, and several of them were answered. One of them was, can club rooms be used by the community? I have a couple of questions about stipulations, and a stipulation that was recommended earlier tonight that is not a part of the zoning memo that we've all received. And I didn't know if, Ken, if you could come up and perhaps answer some of those questions? Thank you. One was in the permitted uses and, I'm going to move it over, the permitted uses and in the prohibited uses, I didn't know if there was a possibility to add a prohibition for psychic readers?
Yes, there absolutely is.
That is in there?
No, if you're not comfortable with what is in there and you want to specifically add the term, the phrase, psychic readers, yes, you have that ability to add that as a...
Okay, great. Yeah. The next one, it was mentioned that the Urban Design Commission approved unanimously the architectural design of the project. One of the things that they mentioned, though, in their approval was wider awnings. And at the UDC meeting, Branch indicated that they would be willing to put in wider awnings. Is that also part, is that considered in this?
No, that would be coming just from the UDC as a suggestion to consider that. If you want to make it a requirement, then it would need to be an additional condition.
Right. And then there was a stipulation mentioned by Garvis, I believe, stating that Branch would be the developer for the project, the sole developer. Would you mind explaining that a little bit further, or Garvis, if you'd like to explain that a little bit further?
Yeah, I'll be happy to let Garvis explain that. The reason it's not in staff's recommendation is that's not something that we have done in the past, is restrict a development to a particular developer, it runs with the property. It doesn't mean it cannot be none. Scott and I have talked about that. I don't have any objections if you want to include that. That's not something that normally we do, and as such, I did not include that.
All right. Garvis, would you mind coming up and just talking a little bit more in more detail about the motivations for adding that stipulation, or for requesting to add that stipulation?
Yes, ma'am, I'd be glad to. Not so much suggesting it as availing you of the opportunity of choosing to add that or the council choosing to add that as a condition of the zoning. In certain, on certain levels at certain times, we've run into questions regarding, well, okay, well, you say Branch has a great reputation, the 40 years, and you've heard the billions of dollars of money and the amount of space that they've developed, but how do we know that Branch won't flip this to someone like the original developer, who I won't name? And here we are, stuck again with someone that really can't pull the deal off and make it come to fruition. So I merely suggested that as a matter of comfort, knowing that even during your deliberations or your discussions up here, there's been complimentary remarks made about Branch. And I think, I don't think anyone questions their capability in the marketplace. So it was to provide you, through all the stipulations that we've given and that staff's imposed with another level, so that you could be comfortable with Branch or one of its affiliates being the sole developer. So if for some reason something happened and another developer came back, they'd have to come before this mayor and council to be approved. That was my thought process.
Yeah, absolutely.
Garvis, if I wanted to ask you one question. Why is it that Branch decided not to put underground parking to a certain extent? Because that would have opened this up to more green space. Because right now, 538 parking spaces is a terrible waste of usable land.
No, it's actually, it's actually a very prudent business decision on their part. If you'll recall, the structured parking, which costs upwards of $20,000 per space, was financed by the tax allocation district that was placed on the property. So without the tax allocation district being in place, it's not a financial feasibility.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I do have, actually, this question that you might want to address, Garvis. I know that we've talked several times tonight about the fact that the corner property is not owned by the applicant. That's an intractable reality, and I think everyone in this room understands that. The renderings, of course, and what we've talked about, the streetscape will be completed, trees will be put in. I just wanted to put up, is there just the possibility of having some kind of right-of-way access? For example, if the city wanted to put in signage while this land is still under negotiation or, you know, someone is thinking they can put something on there that they simply cannot put on there?
The bank that owns it through their council has been extremely receptive to granting the easements that we've asked for in order to stabilize the site and bring it to street level and otherwise make it attractive through landscaping and otherwise. I don't see any reason why they wouldn't be amenable to that as well. That'd be speculation on my part, because their attorney is not here tonight, but as I mentioned, we're in negotiations with them. And to the one person that says, "Let Branch come back when they own the property," well, it's a little difficult to do sometimes when you begin with a bank that has foreclosed on the property and because of the missteps of a broker is under the impression that the property's worth significantly more than it is. So I think that would be something that they'd be agreeable to, just simply based upon the feedback that we've gotten from them during the process.
Do I say Ms. Wilkerson, you got a question? Or Mr. Lenika? I'm looking at my screen.
Yes, thank you. Some of my questions also have to do with the parking. It seems to me that, I know that the Branch fellow said that there was more than enough for the retail, but I think some of the stipulations I see say 1.75, but it seems like it's calculated for the residential, but it's calculated at 1.5. And what, you know, the things that I heard him saying, what I don't see calculated in this figure is parking for the leasing office, which will have people coming to inquire about the apartments. And also, I think I heard him talking about the clubhouse is being rented or open to the community for use. And so it seems like that would also require additional parking, and I don't know if that's figured in there. So I wanted to inquire about that. And the other thing, when I'm reading about this urban design district downtown, and also the, I don't know if it was in the urban design district or the mixed use, but there was a lot of information about bicycles and providing for spaces for bicycles, and I haven't heard anything about that as well. So I was wondering if you could answer those questions for me. Thank you.
Are you looking at me or staff? Well, I'll begin, then I'll let Ken repeat what he's already told you. With respect to the parking ratio requirements that the city has, we have met those from a residential perspective, and we have exceeded those from a commercial perspective. From Branch's experience, you definitely need to overpark the retail for it to be successful. With respect to bikes, there's, when I say pedestrian, meaningfully positioned pedestrian connectivity between the residential and non-residential component, it includes bike amenities as well, such as the racks that are placed in strategic portions throughout the various entry ports into each of the residential properties. Like I say, Ken can expound on that from a staff's perspective.
So as far as the requirements for those other uses that aren't under the commercial area, like the leasing office, or fitness center, or cyber cafe, or the clubhouse, do those, you know, require, it seems like from what I'm reading, that they should have parking for those as well?
The ordinance does not specifically segregate those particular uses out to require additional parking. It is considered, excuse me, that the numbers that are required for the apartments in general are sufficient enough to handle additional leasing spaces. Now, if they choose to designate spaces for leasing and have additional ones, that's fine, but the ordinance doesn't mandate that they have that. With regard to bicycle stuff, the reason we don't, it's not included in our presentation from a staff point of view, is we picked that up on plan review. Those kind of requirements there, where they're going to locate bicycle-related issues are picked up, once a plan is approved at zoning level, and then it would advance on into our plan review level, that's where those exact locations and all of that aspect would be addressed. There is a difference in the parking requirements, because it is a, within the urban design guidelines, and what they have proposed does exceed what those minimum requirements are. We may think it needs more, and that's fine, but the ordinance, I'm just telling you what the ordinance says, and they meet the requirements of the ordinance based on the urban design aspects, which treats parking differently than if it were a development that was sitting on South Cobb as a shopping center. It's just the nature of the way the ordinance is drawn.
Ms. Lenika, is your button on to speak?
Yes, sir. I've got a couple of questions for both Ken Sudrich and Garvis Sams related to stipulations, and we may go back and forth as to who the appropriate person is to field them, but I'm trying to get my hands on, you know, just what's being proposed here. Mr. Sudrich, the first staff recommended stipulation, number one, reads, "The zoning is subject to the stipulations agreed upon by the applicant in the letter submitted and dated November 6, 2013 by Garvis Sams, et cetera, et cetera." It talks about if there's discrepancies between that letter and the staff stipulations below, the stipulations in the staff memo shall apply. But my question is, first, what about stipulations that are in Mr. Sam's letter that do not appear in the staff recommendations? For instance, in Mr. Sam's letter, number 15 reads, "Subsequent to a successful rezoning of the subject property and concurrently with Branch's purchase of the property, Branch agrees to purchase the two city-owned outparcels based on the same per acre price with which Branch is paying for those portions of the subject property. Said purchase price shall be reduced to the extent of Branch's projected costs in connection with the construction of the Spring Road infrastructure and other infrastructure applicable to the project, which shall be dedicated to the city of Smyrna." Now, understand from a brief conversation we had earlier this evening, that after discussion with the city attorney and Mr. Sam Jahla decided that stipulation would not be applied, but there's nothing that I'm reading that says that. And so in the absence of a document or written stipulation saying, "Ignore stipulation number 15" in Mr. Sam's letter, is this council committing, if this motion passes, to sell property at a price that we don't know, subject to construction costs, that we don't know what they are? I mean, do we end up giving away city property? I'm just confused whether that stipulation is in or out, or partially in or partially out, or where are we on it?
I think Mr. Sams was agree. We've had a long conversation about this, Mr. Lenika, and in particular with the city attorney. That really is a separate issue, and your point is well-taken. I may have been, I may have tried to make that too fine. The easiest solution to that is just to specifically delete. If you, if anybody moves for approval of that, just delete that from that provision.
Okay.
Which would probably be easier than the... Which would probably be easier than the finesse that I was trying to deal with.
Yeah, all right. A similar question is stipulation number 17 in Mr. Sam's letter, which says, "The plans include restaurants as a part of the retail component within the proposed mixed-use That was true on the site plan, but those restaurants, my understanding, are located on the city-owned parcels that are not part of this proposal. And then it also goes on to say in Mr. Sam's letter, "Said restaurants may serve alcoholic beverages as part of their respective food services upon securing the proper permits from the City of Smyrna and state agencies." That sentence seems to imply that they're entitled to a license without going through the process, which is a conflict to what the sentence, in fact, I think, says, but I'm confused.
Yeah.
Is that another stipulation that should be excised?
I don't read it exactly the same way that you do, but that clause, in essence, is really not necessary because our ordinance, anyway, allows the mixing within our downtown area, the residential and the commercial.
I agree. The ordinance should apply, so should this stipulation also be struck?
That, I don't think it changes the intent. I don't think Mr. Sams would disagree with that if you want to remove that. I don't, I didn't necessarily read it the way you did. That's why it was not removed, but I have no problems with it being removed. I think we still achieve what they're after.
All right. And then in the staff recommendation, stipulation number seven deals with the composition of the exterior facades, brick, stone, stucco, siding, et cetera. And there's a number of stipulations or specifications within that paragraph about siding in particular. What I don't see is any requirement that the siding be of a Hardy Plank or, borrow a word from former Councilman Mike McNabb, of a semiticious nature, more permanent siding. Is that something that would be appropriate to say? If they're going to have siding, it should be a Hardy Plank or similar brand siding used to make sure these apartments are, in fact, quality apartments?
From staff, from staff point of view, from all the material that we've received, I have no doubt that they are amenable to that, but I would ask Mr. Sams to that, so that if you wanted to add more detail to that, I don't have, I don't have any problems with you doing that.
We're fine with that. We didn't see any reason to reiterate what staff had said, but if you want to add more definition to it, then that's fine.
Staff recommendation, stipulation 18 says, "All apartment units shall be maintained in a Class A slash first-class manner." I mean, I kind of understand what that means, but I don't understand from a legislative and enforcement perspective how we could enforce what someone may later view as a capricious or arbitrary determination by persons unknown as to whether the units are being maintained in that manner or not. How do we, why do we have a stipulation that I'm not sure we can enforce?
Let me first say you can enforce it because we acquiesce to it. It's not, it's not imposed in a cavalier fashion by the city, and we understand what it means simply by virtue of the definitions that have been given with respect to the nine-foot ceilings, the granite countertops, the resort-style amenities that we have. So to us, that's how we interpret a Class A type of unit.
I agree, but the devil's in the detail when somebody walks out there that has authority to represent the city and says, "In my opinion, those shingles that need to come off and a whole new roof needs to be put on," and your client says, "Wait a minute, they're only 10 years old. They're perfectly fine for another 10 years," or whatever. How do we resolve that?
Well, you don't have to, since I'm acquiescing as a stipulation to become a condition of the zoning, that we agree to that.
So any requirement, just putting it on the record, any requirement that any unnamed city official would have later on down the road would automatically be agreed to, no matter what the expense?
No, of course, I'm not agreeing to that, Mr. Lenika.
Okay. I didn't think you would, but that's my concern with the way this is phrased.
Well, the way that it's phrased is not in an arbitrary or capricious fashion. I think it's consistent with the intent of staff's recommendation for approval and our acquiescence to that by virtue of our stipulation. So I think taking the two documents within the four corners of both those documents, I think the intent's quite clear. I'm comfortable with it.
I think the intent is quite clear, but I'm very uncomfortable with the execution of that intent. Ms. Sams, maybe you can answer this. Is there any green space or outdoor recreational space in this development for the residents to use?
There are multiple grilling areas set aside as green space, and then, of course, there's the courtyards within the two buildings to the rear along with the pool sections, but is there denominated green space such as required under some of your ordinances? No.
Okay. What are plans for any type of monument signage that is required under our ordinance to delineate this development and this property?
It'll be ground-based monument-style signage at the points of ingress and egress as shown on the site plan. Then there'll be some marquee-type signings that we've agreed to, and agreed to limit to two marquee-type signs as defined in the stipulation letter. In addition to that, we hope to have extensive monumentation and, as I mentioned, city branding images and even artwork on that pin corner once we're able to secure that by virtue of purchase.
Define for me, if you would, because I'm, maybe I missed that, what you mean by the two signs, not the monument signs, but the marquee signs?
The marquee signs, I believe, are shown on some of the elevations or renderings that we had, and I'll let technologically advanced Mr. Martin come up here and get me to those elevations, and I can point those out to you, what they look like.
But is any specification language contained in your November 6 letter?
Yes, sir, there is. It's number five on page, number five on page three. And then if you look at the proposed building elevation that's being shown now on your monitors, hopefully you can see the marquee-type signage. But if you look on page three, number five, under stipulations applicable to the overall community, it says the type of signage. And the last sentence says, "Freestanding signage and other signage such as building-attached vertical marquee signs shall be permitted in accordance with the terms of the City of Smyrna sign ordinance, but they'll be limited to two such signs."
One of the things that I'm not sure we've seen or certainly haven't discussed at all is a landscape plan around the perimeter. Can you define what that landscape plan is or what it might look like?
Certainly. It'll be professionally designed, obviously submitted during the plan review process as is required, and it'll be subject to being vetted by your arborist. We discussed some of that during the review by the Urban Design Committee, but of course they get more into the architectural matters as opposed to the landscaping. But since that's a function of plan review, we've reserved it for that, but I can tell you that it has an amenitized type of development. It'll be handsomely and aesthetically pleasingly landscaped and vegetated.
I mean, I hope it would be, but...
Well, your arborist will see to that.
Just to clarify something that I think is generally understood in construction, we've, the city spent a lot of money to improve the sidewalks along Atlanta Road in front of this development. If those sidewalks are damaged during the construction phase, would your client say that's our cost to repair and replace them?
No, absolutely not. It's not articulated here, but I'll be glad to articulate it now as a condition to become of the zoning, that we'd be responsible for any damage done to any type of city's infrastructure that's been placed, whether it's sidewalks or lighting, anything you have.
And this is just a question, because I don't know the answer. We had the situation in another application some time ago. Do we know how many variances are contained within the proposed site plan, variances on setbacks, or landscaping, or impervious surface, or do we have any feel for how many variances within this plan we're being asked to approve?
I'll let staff respond to that. There is a stipulation where we said that it is specific to this site plan, not just in substantial conformity to it, which would include any variances that may be shown on the site plan, but Mr. Martin, who's the technician in the department, or Mr. Sudrich probably would be better positioned than I to respond to exactly what, if any, variance we have. I think they're precious few.
Yeah, that was a conversation we had about Columbia Properties and East West Connector, South Cobb.
Actually, in this case, even though we have that additional language in there, there are no variances. It does meet all of the requirements. Again, remember, this is within our urban design area in the downtown mixed-use, so it's not a traditional, like, general commercial development. Things that we've reviewed a lot in the past are really not applicable here.
And I guess my last question for right now, I see that all the roads within the complex are to be private roads, maintained by the development, and not to be public roads. Is it, I guess, Mr. Sams and Mr. Sudrich, both of your understandings and opinion that even though the roads would be private, they would be built to city specifications and standards?
They'll be built to the city's design detail specifications with respect to thickness and the like, obviously with respect to the width, that you would expect not.
Correct, but in terms of how much asphalt and how much base?
Materials, the composition, the base, the thickness, yes, sir.
Okay. That's all my questions for now, Your Honor. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Again, I have a few more things to say, but I will do my best to be brief and to edit The, there were a couple of things, again, a lot of questions that I had were addressed. I've addressed a lot of questions and concern, I've tried to address a lot of questions and concerns that residents have posed to me over the past few weeks. You know, there are, I've received a lot of emails that have talked about, they'll mention words like slum. I had one that mentioned the word ghetto. I don't think that's accurate, and I don't even, and I think that those questions have been answered, so I'm not going to go into great detail on that. There were some folks who said, you know, "Is this the first thing that's been thrown at the city?" And it is, and actually, one of the more recent things that was thrown at us was a grocery anchor. Branch came to us, and they said there was a grocery store that was interested. It was Walmart Neighborhood Markets, and I considered this. I did what I usually do, which is research the heck out of something. I looked into what that kind of, you know, what that store was, and was not alone in determining that that was not the kind of fit that we thought the community would want to see there. So, you know, that's just an example that, no, this is not the first thing that has been thrown at us. There have been a lot of things that have come down the pipe on this. That said, I don't think something like the Brave Stadium coming in, that's necessarily going to be the massive game changer for this corner that is, you know, almost two and a half miles away from the stadium. There were a couple of other things that came up, I'm just scrolling down through my notes, but, you know, apartments are not apartments are not apartments, and most of what I'm hearing is people who are opposed to apartments. And again, they're saying it's going to be a slum, it's going to be low income, it's going to be transient, and I think that's been addressed. This is not an apartment or multifamily or four-lease condo, or whatever you want to call it. You can't compare it to a development like the Hickory Lakes, or the Megan's Point, or really even the garden-style post developments. You can't compare it even to Post Riverside, which was built in the late 1990s and has aged, I think the general consensus is that it has aged and held its value very well. It has not descended into transancy and chaos. We live in metro Atlanta. There are traffic concerns that have been raised, and because we live in metro Atlanta, these concerns are valid. There was a recent traffic study conducted here for this site. It says that the proposed project that we're talking about tonight generates more than 5,000 fewer trips a day as the site is currently zoned for. So I think that's something to consider when people, you know, if you're concerned about traffic. There's been a lot of talk about density and housing. Now, I've been clear that I don't think that a development that is only retail is the right fit for this site. I also don't think that a development that is only residential is the right fit for that site. And I think most people probably tend to agree with that. I would love to see more retail here. I would love to see a grocery store here. I live here, too. I shop here, too. I buy groceries. I feed my family. But the facts are compelling. The data is compelling, and I feel that it's hard to look past, and these aren't statistics that have just been thrown at me by Branch. This is, I've done a lot of research. I've put a lot of research into this. Those of you who are on my Word 3 list have seen some of the research that I've done on this, because it surprised me about how housing trends are changing, about how the way people shop is changing, about how the people, where they decide where they want to live. There was a study recently that said that, you know, people who are looking into houses now, people who are setting up households now, it's different. We can't fall into the trap of sort of this me and my friends school of urban planning. We have to really take a look at the data that's presented to us, not here tonight even, just that's there, in studies from, you know, universities across the country and by researchers and by policy institutes. There's one study that said, okay, people who are buying houses now, what they want is, is a bullet point, smaller homes with a high level of finish. They want to live where they can walk to amenities. They want green spaces and fitness centers. They want Main Street villages. They want to live in town or in inner suburbs. They're fond of walking trails and sidewalks. Suburban mixed-use is their most desirable location preference for owners and renters. Now, I read those things, that what people, you know, what experts in the field say that people are looking for as they look to set up their households. We have all of those things right here, but we don't have is the housing. We don't have the density. If you look at our comprehensive plan, it's very clear that in downtown Smyrna, density is key. Density of residential rooftops is key, and I feel that I would be remiss in not working to try to get some kind of housing product that fits that mold. This is not something that I take lightly at all. I told someone last week, I've run a lot of miles on our wonderful trail system pondering this very question. I've had people ask me, "Well, is this a done deal?" Or, "Are all these talks is just for show?" I don't think anybody would be sitting here at 11:10 on a Monday night if this were just for show. I drive by this site every day, just like so many of you in this room. I live here with my family. I chose to move to Smyrna. I chose to raise my family here. This is where we've put down our roots. I have a keen interest in making sure that Smyrna is a phenomenal place to live, and I don't think I would make any kind of decision that would be detrimental to that interest. So if there are no other comments, I think we've had some good, are there other comments? I guess is my question. Then this time, I'm going to go ahead and move to approve this request. It is, item number, let me scroll back up. It's item Z13-08. This is a zoning amendment to modify the currently approved site plan and building elevations for the 4.369-acre tract. This is Land Lots 620 and 677, southwest quadrant of intersection of East West Connector and South Cobb. You know what? I'm reading the wrong thing. Thank you. I was on a roll, though. Okay. I'm relying on technology and not on the paper. This is item Z13-014, zoning request. This is a zoning amendment to request to modify the currently approved site plan and building elevations for the John Paul Village redevelopment project. This is an 11.3-acre tract, Land Lots 559 and 594, the northeast quadrant of the intersection of Atlanta Road and Spring Road, brought to us by Branch Capital Partners Limited Partnership. Now, I would like to make this motion with the, a few things. One would be to delete, and Mr. Lenika, if you will correct me if I miss any of these numbers, I was taking notes as you were speaking, but item number 15, deleting that stipulation as well as a stipulation, and if you could remind me of the number pertaining to the pouring. 17 with the pouring. And then to add the detail for Hardy siding, to add the stipulation prohibiting any kinds of psychic readers, and making sure that the developer will take care of all damage to sidewalk sliding, et cetera, anything that the city has put in. If it is damaged, the developer will take care of that. I also do want to add the stipulation that Branch be the sole developer for this project. I think that that is something that gives an element of protection, that this is not a property that will immediately then be flipped and sold to someone else. a property that will immediately then be flipped and sold to someone else, and we are starting all of this over again.
Our motion is second. So approved with those stipulations. Any discussion? What's your name, Mr. Lenick?
Yes, sir, Your Honor. You know, if this motion passes, I hope, you know, that we can depend on Branch to do all the things that they've talked about tonight. They are a reputable company, and I think have a reputation for doing what they say they're going to do, and we will depend on that. You know, I'm excited about the opportunity to work with Branch. At the same time, I'm disappointed in the specific proposal that is the opportunity. Looking at our zoning review standards, and frankly, I disagree with staff interpretation on a number of them. I do think there are some potential negative and adverse impacts to values and surrounding property owners if this plan is approved. I'm also bothered by the fact that the plan includes treatment of the city-owned parcels, which are not part of this. And, for example, out of 24,500 total square feet of commercial space in the proposal, 16,500 are on the two lots that the city owns that we just took out of the proposal. So we're down to 8,000 square feet of retail, not 24,500. That kind of shaves the definition of mixed use a little bit for me. I think it also creates a potential hardship for the corner parcel, which is owned by, you know, I guess, a bank in Florida. I don't know these people. I've never talked to them. I don't know who they are. But it's going to be very difficult for them to market and sell that property with the plan being built around them that landlocks them, where we're not going to give them, I don't think, access to the intersection because of traffic and safety concerns. I just don't know what's going to happen there, and I'm concerned that that corner parcel, which is a key, key, I mean, it is the gateway parcel for the whole gateway 11 acres. It's just left out of it and undefined. I don't know if it's buildable without variances. I just don't know. A word that was used a lot tonight was overzoning. Well, I was part of the council that in 2007 approved the zoning for that site, and for the 2007 situation, I don't think it was an overzoning. I think it was a great potential project. It was, at the time, the largest investment in Smyrna history. It's going to be well over $100 million. We were all excited about it. Goodness gracious, there was a lot to be excited about. Of course, then the Cobb County School District sued the city over the TAD project, and that delayed it. And then what hit in 2008 was the worst recession in U.S. history, beaten only by the Great Depression of the 1930s. Those are extraordinary circumstances. And they, between them, killed the other project. I don't think that makes the site any less valuable or important for the city of Smyrna. You know, going back to the '90s and early 2000s, I can remember talking with Stephen Daniels, saying, this is a great site. It's a key parcel. I mean, it's a wonderful opportunity for us to do something in a market that, at the time, was booming. And in the midst of this current application coming forward on November 11th, this has been said many times, I think the game changed. The announcement that the Atlanta Braves are moving to Cobb County, literally adjacent to our boundaries, just two miles away from this site. That has a lot of unknown impacts. I don't know what the impacts are. I think it does change the situation. And I've heard from a lot of residents who have concerns about traffic and DUI. I also hear residents that are excited about the economic opportunities that this offers Smyrna. I think it's going to have a number of impacts that we can only start to imagine right now, and it'll be very interesting to see how this thing goes forward. But for a number of reasons, I'm just not comfortable supporting this, and I plan to vote no.
Mr. Fennel.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I've read every email. I've taken every call. I've had my town hall meeting, and just earlier, as was mentioned last month, this city council approved a development in my ward that has broad citywide implications. A company, a global company, has made an investment in Smyrna of $300 million, or the Riverview Landing Project, 82 acres annexed on the south side of town, to create a city center virtually on that side of Smyrna, but in Smyrna. We have taken months of study over this issue, these details. Mr. Lenick is right, there's no application that's perfect, either the one that was presented in the beginning, which had it been started, absent the TAD challenge, would have been stalled in mid-project as you see the current site to be, but further along in its development by that time. And who knows what could have become of that site. None of us in this room own this piece of property. We own two parcels, small parcels. The owner of this property has a contract with the developer who's betting $40 million of their own money on this project, and they're bringing that investment to Smyrna. I don't take that lightly when a company has the value proposition facing them that could bankrupt their company if failed. These are retail experts, 66 developments of this nature within the region. That is experience that cannot be matched by anyone else in this room. I take very seriously their economic model, their proposals, and their ideas. I value just as much the residents who live in Smyrna and want to make sure this site is the best it can be. But none of you in this room is willing to invest $40 million, except this one company. And we cannot deny someone use of their property by virtue of that we don't like something. I've looked at the nine criteria we're required to look at on zoning. This is not a zoning application. This is an amendment to an existing zoning approval that this council made in 2007, prior to most of us arriving. I believe that the Braves' arrival to Cobb County is going to have a transformational change to that other end of Spring Road. I don't know how residual it will be throughout all of Smyrna, other than to say, Smyrna's a happening place. We want to move there. And there are a lot of people in this newer generation who just watched their parents or grandparents go through this housing crisis, and some of them lost their home, their one investment they're told in life that would appreciate in value. If your home appreciated in the past seven years, I want you to raise your hand. That's good. That's the minority. What you will understand about real estate in a lifetime is only subject to the number of experiences you have, buying, selling, leasing. These folks do it every day. They've done it a lot for a lot of years, 40 years in this general area. I believe that we have adequate stipulations that we've put in place. The staff vetted this in detail, guided this to a conclusion. And no, it's not the ideal site. But more retail when they're about to put a million square feet, two miles away, at the Braves' complex, will have an effect on retail development in the region and occupancy of those retail spaces. I know that for a fact. You do, too, intrinsically. I believe we need more residents who are coming to Smyrna. We've attracted them. We've said, here are Food Truck Tuesdays. We're attracting young people to this community in droves. We're hip, cool, happening. We have the Market Village. We have the Green. We have Braun. And we have opportunities where young people are looking to Smyrna as a place to raise their families. We're looking to those empty nesters who are telling me, and I've had a half dozen of them in the past year tell me that the more they hear about Smyrna, now that the kids are gone off to college, that want to move to Smyrna. They're having a challenge finding the right housing situation, because they're ready to sell the big house and move to a downsized product where they can walk to where they want to go. Market Village, where we sit today, was a dare that the city embarked upon, a vision of what we could be as a city by recreating a city center. In order for these retail businesses to survive, you need per capita income, walking around wallets, to spend money to keep these businesses alive. We have two projects within a mile of this location, Jancle and Belmont, that will be heavily housing-based to allow for the retail to survive and grow. These rooftops with the per capita income projected will provide Belmont an opportunity to then land a couple of retailers that we really want, because we will have the housing per capita income spend in those wallets, walking around, walking to the Market Village, walking to Belmont, making this a livable and walkable downtown. This is the vision that Smyrna contemplated when we started this project. It is not an easy decision to sit in one of these chairs. I hope you appreciate that. I took an oath without fear or favor. I don't listen to the mob rule. My job is to evaluate the facts, study the criterion, make sure that the staff recommendation had closely held to our set of standards, our goals, and our plan. I believe this project, the stipulations placed, accepted by the developer, has achieved that. With that, I'm going to support this project, and I hope that as we move forward, this site and the Belmont site will continue to be an anchor for what Smyrna is and is becoming as a preferred destination for a lot of people, not just to live, but to work, to play, and to stay.
Thank you. There's several things that were discussed tonight that make me feel uncomfortable about this development. And one of the things that the Branch people described was the amenities in the complex. And I feel like that with a gated community is, we are bringing more rooftops downtown, but we are, we're not creating a destination there for other citizens of Smyrna. And I think that having a destination would actually bring more people to the downtown than just limiting ourselves with this complex. And when I heard the description of the complex, but I didn't hear any description about the retail that was going along with this. So I question whether it meets the definition of the multi-use. And there's, you know, and what it's been described to me with the gated community, and we have businesses downtown. For example, we have two fitness centers downtown. But then this fitness center will be for the 500 or so people that live there, so they won't be patronizing the other fitness centers that are downtown. So that, I think that it wouldn't necessarily help these, some of the surrounding areas. And I also feel like it doesn't fit in with the residential area or the commercial. I do, I'm not so opposed to apartments, and I also don't think total retail is the right thing for that location, I think. But I just don't feel like this is the definition of a mixed use, and that it'll add the value to the surrounding areas. Thank you.
Any other comments? Motion is second to approve. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's denied, four to three. Item, stand by. Item 4B, Z13-018, public hearings under requests, zoning amendment to modify currently approved site plan and building elevations, 4.369 acre tract, land lot 620-677, southwest quadrant of the intersection of East-West Connector and South Cobb Drive, Columbia Properties. Is the applicant here? Mr. Taylor, the background, please.
Mr. Mayor, Columbia Properties Incorporated is seeking approval to amend the currently approved site plan and building elevations for the subject property. The applicant is now seeking a zoning amendment to amend the currently approved site plan and building elevations for the remaining portion of development to accommodate an organic grocery as an anchor. In addition to the site plan, changes to the site plan and building elevations, the applicant is seeking approval for another monument sign for the site. Due to the zoning of the property being addition upon a specific site plan, any redevelopment and/or changes to the plan would require a rezoning or a zoning amendment. Community Development does recommend approval of this zoning amendment.
Mr. Sudwraith, are we ready to move forward with this? Are you with, you look familiar.
I am.
Just for the record, who are you?
For the record, I'm Andy Campbell, partner with Columbia Properties. Good to see you.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here who's in opposition to, or that would like to make any public comment concerning this issue? Does that mean you want, then come forward and be sworn in?
I have to be sworn again?
Yeah, and you don't, yeah, and then we'll call you.
Yes.
Now, if you'll have a seat, if you'll have a seat. This is Mr. Wade Lenick's ward. Surely this should be pretty quick, maybe a couple of hours.
I think this will be more brief than the previous item.
And I apologize to the auditor. I'm sorry. You got some splendor, your husband, I know.
I write notes. They need a note for their son.
Yeah, right. I need a note from you? No.
Nobody's telling for me. I can write notes for him.
No. Mr. Lenick.
Mr. Sudwraith, do you have a presentation to the audience?
Yes, Mr. Lenick, I appreciate that. This should be a shorter presentation and...
Thank you for that presentation.
And that would be it.
No, go ahead, please.
Anyway, we've had Columbia Properties in multiple times. You all know where it is. It's at the corner of South Cobb and East-West Connector. The last amendment we had was to actually create individual lots and allow individual uses on the site. Since that time, again, things have changed, and we have a new proposal to actually be closer to the original proposal, which is basically to put in a small anchored shopping center on that. So what we have up on the screen now shows you both the zoning map and the future development map, which is basically commercial. What the applicant is asking for is approval of modifications to the currently approved site plan with the listed variances in the staff memo, approval of the building elevations for those buildings, as well as approval of an additional freestanding monument sign for the development. This is the currently approved site plan, again, reflecting sort of the individual lots we had talked about previously, and those building elevations to go with that. What the new proposal is, is more of a true shopping center with a small anchor, which is a organic grocery store with inline retail next to it. The corner lot, or the corner side of the lot at the intersection is, again, will also be inline retail. All of that will sit on one lot. The previous approval for the Krispy Kreme and the Del Taco individual lots still stand. The Krispy Kreme under construction, and the Del Taco plans are being reviewed. These are the elevations. Staff has reviewed them and is comfortable with all of that. Again, these are traditional-looking, I mean, things that would be compatible with what's out in the area. out in the area, and then the proposed monument sign. Pictures of the property, and then staff's recommendation. Basically, what we have done here is just added, we are rolling over the previous approvals, which would be appropriate, and then we've added in what needs to be addressed here, which is underlying, which picks up the additional sign location and the anchor tenant at 28,000 square feet as well. We're, again, rolling over the architectural styles and the brick stuff that we had previously talked about, whoops, and that's basically it. It is to amend the plan from a many-lot development to one lot with the architectural style. I know that the petitioner is here and can answer any additional questions, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Hi. I just got one quick question. We went from AutoZone, and, was it AutoZone or something?
Yes.
And then boom. This is what I don't understand about these, you folks are in this business. We went from an AutoZone to an organic food store that Sprouts, that any community would love to have. Now, just explain that to me, because I don't get it.
Well, I'd be glad to. I can't fully explain it because a lot of it is the machinations of the retail real estate business, which ebbs and flows like any other business does, and a lot of it is driven by the economy. We are a retail developer who have been developing in and around the Atlanta area for 35 years. Our primary focus, our only focus is retail, and our primary focus is grocery anchored retail. So this is what we focus on. This is our bread and butter. When we bought this site seven years, six years ago, we were hoping to do something similar to this and hoping to be able to attract an anchor like this, and have been working for six years to try and bring this anchor to fruition. Back when we started, Sprouts was not, was only on the West Coast and had no idea that they might be coming to the East Coast. Now there are Sprouts, there are Earth there, there are several organic grocers who are now coming into the Atlanta market.
But this was just fate, fate.
This was fate, this was timing, this was...
It's correct.
This is the supply and demand and ebb and flow of our business, which is what makes our business so tricky, and something that I'm extremely excited about because it allows us to finish what we intended to finish and do it, I think, I think the right way, so...
And it's gonna be just sort of weirding me out.
No.
Make these questions quick, because I'm really getting tired.
You want to buy a piece of property across the street?
Sure.
No, you can't say that. Okay. Any questions or comments? Thanks for bringing...
Mr. Campbell.
...the Sprouts next to Krispy Kreme.
Sure. You know, I'm excited about this proposal. When I got news from staff about Sprouts, and at the time it was an unnamed organic grocer, they wouldn't tell me what the name was.
It's still supposed to be unnamed. I slipped up, so let's call it unnamed.
Won't leave this room.
But I started talking to people in some of the nearby neighborhoods in Ward 6, and even in other Ward 6 neighborhoods, and the result I had from the citizens was absolutely unanimously positive. One lady talked about when she goes to visit her son in Colorado, she shops at a Sprouts near his home, and somebody else had shopped at them in Phoenix, and, you know, all the reports I got were just great, and I was, I'd never heard of them. I mean, they're a Southwest-based chain coming to Georgia. I commend you for getting them to come to Smyrna. Again, just talking to people, I think they're going to draw from West Cobb, from Vinings, from across the river, from all of Smyrna. It's not a Ward 6 grocery store. This is going to draw everywhere, and I think, I think you've made the appropriate modifications with staff's help to the site plan to accommodate it. The only concern I actually have heard is, if this store really does a lot of great business, are we going to be able to get in and out of the entrances and exits, you know, without jamming and blocking things up? From a commercial person's point of view, what a great problem to have.
Right.
I mean, you don't want it, but you'd rather have that than an empty lot, and...
Yep.
Yeah, and after the last meeting we gave you, we figured this would be a little easier.
Right, I appreciate that.
Do you have any information you can share about if this goes forward, when they're going to start construction?
My question.
Sort of a timeline for grand opening?
Sure. I think at this point, and we're still talking about that with them, they, of course, have their own timelines that they're constantly shifting based on other stores that they want to open in the market, but at this point, I think we are talking about groundbreaking in the spring and opening most likely the beginning of '15 as opposed to in '14. Typically, because of a lot of their product, of these organic grocers' product, is produce. They want to open with fresh produce, and fresh produce is tougher in the winter, so they typically like to open in the spring. So I think we're targeting kind of an early spring '15 opening.
Oh, okay.
Okay, we got, we got one person that wanted to speak, so it's not going to hold up the construction of Krispy Kreme, is it?
No.
Okay. If you'll tell us who you are and where you live at.
Hi, I'm Brian Bober. I'm from the subdivision of Woodland Brook off Camp Highland, and I wanted to say, first of all, that Sprouts is super from what I've heard. I've never been there, but I know people out West, and from what I understand, this is one of maybe five that are coming east of the Mississippi, so this kind of puts Smyrna on the map for organic food stores. My main question is, we had a talk about walkability through the site and with the previous plan, I just wanted to make sure that accessibility from the intersection by a sidewalk and to and from Jim &amp; Nick's and throughout the site is still going to be there or worked in through the review, and that there's going to be brick crosswalks throughout the site like we discussed before. It's within walking distance from my house, so it's a little personal there, too, so...
Yeah, and I'll let either Mr. Sutter or Mr. Martin respond to that, but I'll tell you, I have had a conversation, Mr. Campbell, with staff, and that will be part of the plan review process, and that, your messages we take note of, and that's on our radar screen, the things that we want to look at and work on as we move forward.
And it's a, it's a condition of, I think, the previous zoning, that we, it's a verbal condition at the end of the zoning that talks about, we have to have interconnectivity in sidewalks. Where those will be located, we have yet to determine, but like you said...
I do not want to do anything that might mess this deal up.
No problem, no problem. Yeah, that's already a part of the previous zoning conditions, so...
Okay.
Any other questions by council?
Sort of fading in and out of consciousness, while... Go ahead, Wade.
And I commend all the citizens who are still here at 20 till midnight. Thank you all, and Mr. Campbell, thank you. I'm sure you didn't plan on being here this late. I'm going to move to approve item Z13-018, which is a zoning request, a zoning amendment to modify the currently approved site plan and building elevations on a 4.369 acre tract and landlots 620 and 677. It's located at the southwest quadrant of the intersection of the East West Connector and South Cobb Drive.
Second.
By Columbia Properties.
Second.
Motion's a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved 7-0. Item 5 is previous licenses. You can go. Call me if that readily, if a hot light's on down the street. Previous licenses is 5. Item 6 is formal business, presentation of the FY13 audit, and we are so sorry that this has taken so long.
I started to get in line.
This is going to be the fastest presentation.
I did tell Tony J. Riller today, I said, "Tell him they might want to bring their Kindles."
Yes, this is Tammy Gavas from Grace Gavas Demograph, and thank you so much for your presentation.
We should have done this at the beginning of the meeting. But see, then you wouldn't have got, you wouldn't have seen government at its best.
Yes, yes. I started to get in line, just so I could come up and speak.
She's here to present the FY13, so I'll turn it over.
And then I just hit the, how do I get...
All right, listen up, everybody. She's going to, everybody pay attention.
Is anybody left here? Okay.
How do I get to...
Hey, where you guys going? Security's leaving. Go ahead.
I have the financial highlights for the audit for the fiscal year 2013. We have completed the audit and have issued a clean, unqualified opinion. Have a couple of highlights here for you. First is going to be of the general fund.
That's beautiful.
How do we get to click to the next one? Okay, the general fund ended the year with a net increase in fund balance of $1.2 million. Total fund balance in the general fund at the end of the year was $14.6 million of that. Total fund balance, $10.8 is unassigned, and that unassigned fund balance would cover approximately four months of your operating costs in the general fund, which is within the recommended range that the Government Finance Officers Association recommends that you have set aside to cover operating costs in your general fund. Okay, okay. And this next slide is tracking the last three years of your unassigned fund balance. You'll see the first column. In 2011, it was $13.1. 2012, it was $10.3, and the reason for that decrease was there was $3.1 million that was moved to retire the Smyrna Commons debt in FY12. In FY13, it's back up at $10.8 million. Again, just referencing back to $1.3 million, that was the total fund increase in the general fund. Of that $1.3 million, $500,000 went to that unassigned fund balance, and again, it would cover four months of the operating costs of the general fund. The last slide I have is the results of the Water and Sewer Fund for the past three years. I'll just look at the last two years, 2012 and 2013. Overall results in the Water and Sewer Fund is that your revenues exceeded expenditures by $2 million. Your revenues, which is the blue, blue bar, went from $17 to $18 million, but the red bar is your operating expenses. That went from $13 to $14 million, so a $1 million increase in both, so your net ended up being the same from the two years. You ended the year with $27.6 million in total equity in that fund, and of that $27.6 million, $17.5 is the amount that you have invested in the capital assets in that fund. And that concludes my presentation. If you have any questions?
This is the best presentation you've ever made.
Thank you.
You better call them. Tell her she can come in like you.
And again, I apologize. If I would have seen you out there, I would have done you earlier, but when I saw you, it was just too late, so I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Any questions? Okay. Do I hear a motion that we accept the...
So moved.
Second.
A motion second to accept the presentation of the FY13 audit. Is that online? Can people get it online and see it?
Not yet. I was waiting for this. We'll get it up this week.
You said we changed a few numbers tonight after we... Okay. We can pick it up tomorrow.
It'll go up online later this weekend, just to get it over the microphone so people can hear it.
Yes.
Thank you.
And motion second. All those in favor of the motion, please vote. That's approved 6-0, I think, Ms. Pritchett. Melanie left. Yeah, Ms. Pritchett, same thing. It's approved 6-0. Item 7 is commercial building permits. We have none. Item 8 is consent agenda. Mr. Taylor, will you please read the consent agenda for council's approval?
It's a small consent agenda this evening with only two items. Item A is the approval of the November 18, 2013 mayor and council meeting minutes, and item B is to approve the police vehicle equipment installation of light cages and pushbars.
Here mostly approved the consent agenda.
So moved.
And motion, Mr. Sanders, second by Mr. Welch. All those who pay the motion, please vote. That's approved 6-0. I think that's it. Nine, as committee reports, will start tonight with Mr. Ron Fennell, who has no comments. Mr. Lenica has no comment. And now, Mr. Fennell, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll dispense with the traditional report chief, unless you have something pressing you wanted to jump in. I will make an announcement that the city has recommended, and we will hear from the candidate for the fire chief position on December 16, Paige Day of Missouri City, Texas, survived the search process and was asked to join the Smyrna Fire Department as the new chief. She has accepted, and we look forward to having her here on the 16th of December to meet everyone and for this council to consider her approval for that post, to which I understand that she would be willing to start January 6, correct, Tammy? Okay. But I wanted to say that I'm proud of the team of folks who contributed to this process. I thank them all for their time and their commitment, both members of the staff, the city of Smyrna, but those who came in as volunteers to help us in the process, as evaluators, and we are grateful for those folks. And for all those who applied, there were 50 applicants nationwide, and I think we're going to have a great situation there. This morning at the Cobb Chamber of Commerce Community Service Awards, I had three notable Smyrna connections that came out of that. The Smyrna Elementary School nominated Home Depot for work they had been doing in the school and with the school. They received one of the community service awards. Kenny Berts of Kenny's Key Lime and Kenny's Great Pies on Highland Parkway was one of the community service awards winners, and the singular highest honor was the Philanthropy Leadership Award, and Doug Hertz of United Distributors was recognized. All of the award winners, by the way, received a Lily Glass Commemorative Award. So with that, Mr. Mayor?
Wade Lenica.
One last thing. Welcome to the Atlanta Braves for coming to Smyrna, Georgia.
Wade Lenica.
Thank you, Your Honor. I hope everybody had a great Thanksgiving, and certainly best wishes for the upcoming holidays. I appreciate staff decorating our council chambers. The decorations look nice tonight.
They look like the moment I'm in a choir from an orchestra.
Well, then I think you should start singing.
I'm not going to do it.
If you start, we'll follow, I promise.
I'm a whipped dog tonight.
As we get into the holiday season, of course, a lot of things begin happening, holiday parties, holiday shopping, holiday family get-togethers. I'm fortunate to be invited to Cedar Cliffs 1 and 2 get-together this Friday night, and Vining's Glen this Saturday night. Look forward to meeting those residents. Finally, just to say a few words about what happened here earlier tonight. Probably fair to say that we were all surprised in the end by the outcome of the vote on the Johnquill Plaza site. We did something tonight that's very unusual. We split pretty much right down the middle. I think there was some going back and forth along the way, you know, yes, no, yes, no, should we, shouldn't we? One of the takeaways I get from that is, having done this for a while, is if we find ourselves that split, whether we're talking about a city policy, or zoning, or something like that, the best thing we can probably do to avoid those situations is try to meet and talk and go back and forth and see if there's a way to improve whatever it is in a manner that would allow more people to be supportive and go forward with it. We don't always have to be unanimous on everything. Even at home, despite my many brilliant pronouncements, I find that my wife, Robin, doesn't agree with all of them, and, you know, that's, that's okay. You know, we still love each other, and, you know, obviously, business is business, and we all still respect each other up here. But if there's a way that we as a city can do more things and find ways to unite, to modify, to hear concerns and objections, and see if there's ways to address those, then we don't have to have 4-3 votes. We can move forward 5-2, or 6-1, or like many, many projects over the years in the city, starting with the library and the Village Green and the community center, we can do it 7-0. We can be united, and I think that gives our citizens confidence in our government to have the leadership of the city be united. It hurts me, and hurts us, to be divided like this. It's very un... It's very uncomfortable. I hate that it happened on no branches because of their time and money. More sorry about it than any of us ever could be, but just some thoughts, you know, as we get into the holiday season, it's the time to think about ways to get along and work together and find ways to say what we mean and mean what we say and do it in a way that's respectful and find common ground and unite to move the city forward. You know, I look forward to doing that in 2014. With that, I yield.
Ms. Susan Wilkerson.
Thank you, Your Honor. So for those folks that are still up and watching us, I have a couple of announcements to make. Tomorrow night is the annual lighting of the tree and coming home for the holidays. So I'm going to read what is going on there. It's the parade featuring the Whitfield Academy and Campbell High School bands, and of course, Santa and his horse-drawn carriage will proceed to the green from City Hall at 7:00 PM. Santa will light the tree at approximately 7:15. Inside the community center, school-aged choir groups and adult choir ensembles from the area will be singing from both gyms. There will be some crafts for kids in the small gym and a photo opportunity with Santa in the small gym hallway. So hope to see you there. I also want to tell you that King Street will be closed from Stevens Street to the Circle, and Bank Street from City Hall parking entrance to King Street will be closed at 5:00 PM, and both entrances will reopen following the parade. And I think, let's see, that the parade will enter the Village Green at approximately 7:20, so that way, if you can't get there earlier, if you're running late, you can try to be there by the time Santa comes and lights the tree. And the other thing that I'd like to let folks know about is the BYOD party at the Wolf Center. That's Bring Your Own Device, and there will be staff there from the library to help you with the audiobooks and things like, and the magazines and the movies, just showing you how to set it up on your device. And that will be at the Wolf Center on Church Street on Thursday, December the 5th, from 9:30 to 11:30. Thanks so much. With that, I yield.
Mr. Corcoran Welch.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I don't have a formal report this evening, but I want to address something Wade said just a few minutes ago, and I, I don't mind having a 4-3 vote that much. I'd love to have 7-0 all the time, but, but at the same time, I made a decision as to which way I was going to vote, sitting here in this chair during the deliberations and the discussions back and forth. And I don't know that Branch could have come to us and made the changes that could have, could have influenced me in a way and that even before tonight. Or, or that the people, you know, you listen to the people, you listen to each one of them, but, but really, I made that decision here. And, you know, I hate it for them, but, but I hope that it's the best thing for the city in the long run. And with that, Mr. Mayor, I yield.
Ms. Terry Nullwich.
Thank you. I look forward to seeing everyone at the home for the holiday celebration tomorrow or the Santa Parade, it is known in my family's vernacular. I'm also disappointed in how things turned out tonight. I am, I am generally a very upbeat, optimistic person, but I'll be very frank, I am not optimistic that anything's going to be happening on this site for probably three years, if not more. And that's all I have to say about that. That I yield.
Ms. Andrea Bluestein.
Well, I think it's time we all say goodnight. Enough has been said. I am, I'm not pleased, I'm not upset about what happened tonight. I just think that, for one thing, what bothered me the most, and it may sound really silly, is 538 parking spaces. That just, you know, that was such a ridiculous use of land. But anyway, that I yield.
Before I, I just, I want to say one thing, since I've been here the longest. The toughest thing has been to get the retail to come back to the downtown. The easiest thing, looking back now, was to get the government buildings here and get the library and those things. I don't know, you know, John Qua Plaza was a tough, is a tough nut to crack, and I enjoyed working with Branch, and if somebody would have been able to do it, it would have been Branch, but I'll tell you, I don't think, if you look over here at the Stan Thomas Project, which he fought retail, didn't want to have any kind of retail, today, some of those businesses are still empty, because, I'm talking about from day one, I'm talking about ever since they had, there was an ice cream place over there. Boom, it's been vacant ever since then, and I think you've got to promote the retail. I don't know whether or not our towns can support much more than what's out there now. But it's truly a disappointment for me, and whether or not, under somebody else's leadership, it could have changed, but to have a $110 million project that had all the bells and whistles, and seven years later, you wake up and all you've really got is 288 apartments, you know, it just, it's just, it's just baffling, just as much as it was tonight to see Sprouts. We were arguing about an AutoZone in February, January, February, and then boom, Sprouts is in there today. It's just amazing, so...
We need to hire a booker.
I don't think it's, I think it's, I think it's the luck of the draw. Mr. Eric Taylor, anything? Mr. Scott Cochran? Mr. Terry Graham? Anybody else? Anybody need a note from Lisa? God help you if you do. I declare this meeting, is that 12 o'clock?
No.
What is it?
Show calls.
Okay, I'm running this meeting. Okay, maybe it's not adjourned at 12 o'clock. Show calls hearing, we have nothing. We had two people sign up for citizen, but Jill Evans, is she still here? No. Alec Bakri? No. Although, I declare this meeting adjourned at 12:01.